All right, here we go. Welcome to the Palmdale City Council meeting. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Bishop.
Here.
Mayor Protem Loa.
Here.
Councilmembers Olson.
Here.
Betancourt.
Here.
Alarcon.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, so let's go and have a pledge of allegiance, followed by a brief moment of silence led by our Mayor Protem, Richard Loa.
Thank you, Mayor. Place your hand over your heart, face the flag, and repeat. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so that brings us to our cute critter video. Let's go ahead and cue that up. All right, plenty of animals to adopt at the shelter. If I had my choice, it'd probably be the orange cat. All right. So, City Manager, are there any items to pull from tonight's agenda?
Not at this time.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can you please play the public comment code, code of conduct into the record, please?
Mayor, can we just acknowledge the monthly observances first?
Oh, absolutely.
I'm gonna read those off. The City of Palmdale would like to acknowledge the following observances: Breast Cancer Awareness Month, Code Enforcement Week, the 6th through the 12th, Crime Prevention Month, Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
All right, and I'd be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to our fine code enforcement officers in the back. They do some great work. Just, yeah, stand up. There we go. Our growing code enforcement team does a great job. They're working hand in hand with the Sheriff's Department to help bridge the gap on all those calls that are needed, those quicker times, and it's a good partnership. So, thank you. All right, so now we're ready for the public participation code of conduct.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Palmdale City Council is now in order. A code of conduct will now be read, and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's city council meeting, and the council encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the council must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the council's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the council. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with council members or staff. Please remain respectful of the form and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements towards the council, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and council members, and may not excessively clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the council meeting. Finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify city staff. Thank you for your cooperation. Now is a time for public participation on the entirety of the consent calendar and new business. We have several speaker cards. I will begin to call them Isella Carino.
Hello, everybody. This is my first time, so I'm not so familiar. But I'm here to talk about 5.3 and the animal contract that we have. I'm a mom. I'm a substance abuse counselor, and I TNR, mostly cats and dogs. My mother lives out in Palmdale side of Lake LA, and every day that I go over there, there's countless animals that are just roaming, and it's very sad to me, you know, that there's no fund, allocated funds towards spay and neuter for most of our community. Our community is very irresponsible, for the most part. And it just really tears me up that, you know, there's just a small community that we kinda helped TNR. These cats, that they're not even mostly wild cats. They're people's pets that they're being told by Animal Control to release, to just release them somewhere. And that's what's happening, you know? I'm just here to just ask for some change. You know, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just clear up something for her, for the people that are watching at home? TNR means trap and release, right?
TNR is, yes, trapped and released.
Okay. There's people watching at home that may not know what it is.
Yes, many of us do that in our spare time.
Okay.
And we need help. We need support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Renee Kimbrel.
I have said this many times, and I will continue to say it. You need to fire the damn county. They are doing a horrific job. The administration is a nightmare. They now are euthanizing dogs seven days a week. For what? So you can have empty kennels? For what? They have a new requirement for rescues that they have to have a $2 million insurance policy in order to pull dogs. They can't afford that. That's not realistic. Why should the rescues get insurance to insure the county? The county should be thankful that the rescues are stepping up and trying to help with the situation. The shelter needs to have longer hours. This 11 to 5, Monday through Friday? For what? Most people are working. They're commuters. If you want to only be hours, six hours a day, make it 2 to 8, something like that. Be open on Sundays. Make it to where people can get in there and adopt the animals. Most of my rescue friends have taken on the responsibility of anywhere from 11 to 26 animals each. Each one of them is paying for this out of their pockets. We cannot continue to try to save all of these lives and help the situation by ourselves. We need help. The only way to do that is for you guys to extend the shelter, expand it, make more room. We should be ashamed of ourselves. Palmdale has the highest kill rate of every shelter in LA County. I understand it was supposed to be just an adoption center initially, but now it has the highest in-seak and the highest kill rate. We have to do something. You wanna know where your money's going? Check out the salaries of the administration for LA County Animal Control. Marsha Maeda makes almost half a million dollars a year. Seriously? We could put that money to good use. Get rid of the county, put it in the city, take it over, make a difference. Thank you.
Carla Hubler.
Hello. I've been here before. I'm a networker. I try to put the animals in the shelter online, get them seen. I am here to speak up for the animals in the Palmdale LA County Shelter. There is a lack of space, and many are not even making it two weeks, some 11 days. Palmdale Shelter has the highest euthanasia rate at 40.78 versus the county average at 30.81. Palmdale was supposed to be an adoption center, but has turned into a shelter, was turned into a shelter. It is too small and receives more animals than Lancaster, which is overcrowded, too. The county has said expanding it would cost too much money. The county sent out a request to existing kennels for space to rent. Then they said it would cost too much and would need to be staffed. It seems the county proposes ideas and gives hope only to then say it will cost too much money. A simple idea, which shouldn't cost anything, is open on Sundays so people can have more time on their days off to come in and adopt. This is a commuter community and difficult for people to get their 11 to 5 on a weekday, and then only Saturdays. Most of the time, an adopter must come two or three times to complete an adoption. Other counties, San Bernardino, San Diego, San Jose, Stanislaw are open on Saturday and Sunday and later in the evenings. I feel lives would be saved. It is a 24/7 operation, so it shouldn't be a hardship. Some rearranging of schedules. I have proposed this to the county, but no word from them. The county contract has attachment A, page 2, description of services includes euthanizing sick, injured, dangerous, unweaned, feral, and unadoptable animals. Well, many adoptable animals are euthanized for lack of space. 250 animals on average per month for Palmdale. Again, open the shelter on Sundays. It would save lives. We are asking the city for help for spay and neuter, resources, affordable, more access, enforcement of laws, and education. Nothing will change unless the city helps and the city and citizens demand better of the county shelter. Thank you. This is Shortstack, Bobby Galileo, Lola and Tina. And Lola made it 11 days. Nothing wrong with these animals.
Allison Montez.
Hello. My cohorts already said, like, almost everything I was gonna say. It's all on the same list. But I don't think that the contract should be renewed every five years. Apparently, there's like a plan to reduce euthanasia within five years. But if that was the case, why in the heck are they doing seven-day-a-week euthanasia now? That just seems kind of like defeating the purpose. Also, on the topic of the $2 million insurance policy, I'm one of the people that's filing for 501(c) so that I can become a rescue partner, pull from the shelters myself, not go through someone else's rescue. And people like me are not going to be able to do that. A lot of these dogs who are getting the bite records, who would need the insurance policy, don't deserve them, and they're getting euthanized for absolutely no reason. So, out of pocket right now for the animals I'm rescuing, I just took a dog from Palmdale, actually from Home Depot. Took me 15 days to get her. I'm spending $20,000 to $30,000 a year on vet care, $2,000 to $3,000 a month on animal care, boarding, sitting, all of that. And it's just like ridiculous, just the fact that, you know, these animals are out there and that we're having to do this. I don't agree that the county also should be running things. It should be the city. Marsha Maeda has made a lot of mistakes. There's actually, most of these shelters, I hear the dogs are starving. They don't have food. That doesn't sound like good management to me. If you can't even feed the animals that you have, something needs to be done. And if she could just take a little money out of that big paycheck of hers, stop buying boats or whatever she's buying and feed the freaking animals, maybe something, you know, would change. Maybe things would be better. Maybe these animals would be better tempered if there's ones that are unadoptable. And also, surrenders only get like five to seven business days before they're killed. That's not fair either. And it's like, there's just so many things that still need to be changed before this contract is renewed. Yeah, so I guess that's it, because they said everything else. Thank you.
Eugene Hernandez, 7.1.
I found it very racist for the council currently to discontinue the Human Rights Committee. I don't, I don't understand why you started a committee, and at the last meeting that I attended of the Human Rights Committee, Curly disrupted it completely. And it was, it was a fiasco. And Skylord, the chair of the committee, never, has never called the meeting in two years. And to think that the Human Rights Committee is the same as the Equity Committee of Lancaster is totally false. It's two different entities. And to think that we're gonna unite with Equity Committee of Lancaster, which is made up mostly of African Americans that are very hostile to Latinos, is totally stupid idea. And, and I, I want the council to rescind this. I don't want Curly to get his way of eliminating the only committee in the city of Palmdale was has activist Chicanos as part of the committee. Why didn't you get rid of the Planning Commission? You know, those people have been in there for decades. You have never exchanged those people for any newcomers. They're just tied to big business. They approve everything that goes before them. And if you wanna get rid of a committee, get rid of the Planning Commission. You know, why is it always us as Chicanos who suffer from your racism? Why is it? Why is Curly allowed to run this city with his racist rhetoric and his racist behavior toward Andrea? And you let him get away with it? Why? You know, you should have a conscience. You should be able to foot your foot down and fire this racist and not follow everything that he says as gospel truth. You know? Why don't you, you show heart. Why don't you show courage?
Sky Jung.
Hey, Sky.
Good evening. My name is Sky Jung, and I'm the chairwoman for the Human Rights Advisory Committee. And while I cannot say that 100% of my fellow committee members approve the ordinance before you guys tonight, I personally approve of it. As from the very beginning of the committee's formation in 2021, where I was a founding member, I have almost immediately fought for working together with our fellow neighbors to the north. As human rights issues do not end at the Cactus Curtain. In fact, issues such as homelessness, racial inequality, economic issues for socioeconomics, they don't end there either. And in fact, I feel it's a great idea. And I want to urge you guys to vote for this. One, it'll give greater leverage to our body, especially when it comes to SPOT 1 funding. Currently, the both of us, we don't get our fair share, while other areas like Skid Row and downtown LA get a fair shake. This can give us the leverage we need. Furthermore, we can also work together and use our combined resources to better address issues like homelessness. Tax dollars only go so far for one city, but if we use them together, we can do a lot better good. Moreover, if this is actually gonna take place, then I'm all for it. But if it's not, and there's not gonna be a combined group, then I urge you to keep the Human Rights Committee as is. In closing, I'd like to thank you guys for the opportunity to serve the taxpayers, the city council, the staff, and the residents of Palmdale. It has been a great honor and a pleasure. Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you.
Rodolfo Perez, 7.1.
How's it going?
Good evening. My name is Rodolfo Perez. I have been part of the Human Rights Advisory Committee since mid-2022. And it's been a pleasure to hear individuals from the community and their concerns, and then, you know, hopefully getting that information to you guys so you can make whatever decisions or encouragements on what we, what we need as a community. I'm a little disappointed that it's being considered to dismantle. However, I do understand for the past couple months, nothing has been getting done in regards to, it's just been bottlenecked. And I don't know if that's from outside persons or persons having an agenda who are on, on the committee. I do think things could be run smoother. Like Sky mentioned, yeah, I think having something more unified with Lancaster to have more like an Antelope Valley, you know, committee, that'd be great. Because, yeah, it's not just Palmdale, it's also Lancaster. Working in the mental health field for the past 20 years, it's, it's, it's important to know that we have the city to help us address these things. Whether it's community things, whether it's, you know, ethnic advisories, or if it's, if it's human rights stuff, you know, it's so important that we have, you know, a say. And I hope that, you know, if this moves forward, great. If it doesn't move forward as a, as a collaboration with Lancaster, I would hope that we could keep the Human Rights Advisor Committee. But I would also encourage this dais to, you know, drop in and take a look at, you know, what is being discussed. And I think that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Felix Menendez, 7.1.
Hi, Felix.
Buenas tardes. Good afternoon. Bueno, soy acá porque me llama la atención el punto 7.1 sobre quitar el comité de recursos humanos. I am here because it's brought to my attention that you wanna take the committee out, where we have a voice. Es bastante alarmante de que ustedes estén considerando eliminar este comité, ya que hace mucha referencia con los datos y inquietudes que tiene la comunidad. It surprises me because it has a lot of, like, detail and facts of the community. Sabemos de que han habido muchas cosas que no estamos de acuerdo. Parte del Consilio ha votado para eliminar muchas cosas. I know that there's been differences which we haven't agreed on. Que beneficien a la comunidad latina. That benefit the community. Me llamó la atención también hace dos reuniones donde hubo un reporte de la vivienda en donde solo dos latinos son beneficiados en ese programa. Something else that caught my attention was about housing, how only two Latinos were benefited from this, from the report I got. El reporte es claro y no sé cómo llamarle porque a ustedes no les gusta que se le diga de que practican parte del racismo en esta ciudad. Okay, I don't know what to call it, but to me, it seems like it's racism. I don't know what you would call it. Otra de las cosas, la concejal Laura Betancourt, hace un tiempo le llamó bitch a la concejal Andrea Alarcón. Y hasta hoy no he visto unas disculpas públicas de parte de ella, ni del fiscal, ni de nadie del Consilio. Okay, it was also brought to my attention that Ms. Laura Bencourt called Ms. Alarcon Andrea bitch. Está grabado? It is, it is recorded. Otra de las cosas, en el reporte de la vivienda, ahí donde la ciudad patrocinó el evento de la Hispanidad este año, es mentira. There was another report where the City of Palmdale said that they sponsored the Hispanic Heritage event, which is not true. Son cosas de que el comité, la Comisión de Recursos Humanos, Relaciones Humanas, debería estar trabajando, y muchas veces eso a ustedes no les gusta. I think that we should be working together. I know you guys don't like that. Yo sé de que no les gusta cuando vengo y hablo, cuando venimos y hablamos. I know that you, you guys don't like it when I come to speak or we come to speak on behalf of our people. Pero es parte de mi trabajo también defender y levantar la voz por mi comunidad. It is part of my job to raise my voice and speak for, for our community and our people. Gracias. Thank you.
Can I just make a point of order to the chair? This is a perfect example of why we need translation here. It is really not incumbent upon members of the public to bring their own translator here. I introduced a motion several months ago, which was adopted by this council to immediately implement consistent translation services at our council meetings. That has not yet been implemented. So I hope that this is just, serves as an example and demonstrates the urgency by which we need to implement mandatory translation at every council meeting.
I know we're working on that, but let's, let's get to the next speaker, because I know we got more people waiting.
Cindy Small.
Okay. How you doing?
I'm good, thank you. Forgive me for being dirty. I just got off a ranch working with rescued horses. I'm not used to working, speaking in public and all of that stuff. But I just wanted to speak up for the animals in the shelters. I just know that there's a lot of people that are out there breeding. I know people personally that breed dogs for profit and stuff like that. And it's really sad that there's so many that are being euthanized and not having homes when other people are just bringing more puppies in the world. So I was just gonna say, I would like to see if there's a way we could penalize people more for breeding dogs and give, and also give more access to spay and neuter, bring the public into involvement, maybe. I'm just throwing out some ideas from the top of my head. Maybe bring college people in for credit for walking shelter dogs around or something because they need the exercise in order to be calm and not be mislabeled as aggressive because they've been stuck in a little kennel for six months or something. Let's see, is there anything else? I just wanna, I basically just wanna bring more attention to the fact that there's too many shelter dogs that need homes and stuff like that. So I just wanted to see if there's a way we could get more people involved with knowing what the problem is and stuff like that. Sorry, I'm just blabbering, but thank you so much for listening. I think that's about it, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next speaker.
Becky Kullen.
Hi. I wasn't planning on even coming to this meeting at all. I kinda gave up on things, but I was looking on Facebook and I saw a post of a two-year-old Pomski, which is half Pomeranian, half Husky, and they're the sweetest dogs ever. I've rescued quite a few of them. And, okay, her intake date was September the 26th. She was available for adoption September the 30th, and she's already cleared for euthanasia on October the 6th. They only gave her not even 10 days to be viewed, to be adopted. And, and it's just, it's real discouraging. I don't know, I don't know what it's gonna take. I've always been taught to, it's our duty to protect things that can't protect themselves. And I've taught my son that, and he's overseas in the military now, doing what I've always taught him. And you, as elected officials, I think, have the same duty to, I guess, protect. And if, I don't know, it seems like the problem's getting worse. If you take it to your elected officials with Catherine Barger, whoever, they have the, they have the opportunity to change this. They can do something, but they're not. And it's, you know, for us rescuers, it's a lot on our emotional health and our mental health. Like I say, I'm about to give up because it seems like the more dogs I rescue, triple of that get euthanized. And, and they say humanely euthanized, and I'm told, don't talk about it, you know? Don't say the word "kill." But that's what you're doing, is they're killing them. If they're gonna euthanize, I'm gonna say "kill." Kill a perfectly healthy two-year-old Pomski that was only given 10 days to be seen. Euthanasia in the dictionary means to put something out of its misery, to stop it suffering. That dog isn't suffering, so it's not being euthanized. They're killing them. And I just, I don't know what it's gonna take, but I just came here to beg you guys to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no more speaker cards on these sections.
Okay.
I wasn't planning on speaking on anything tonight, but I gotta say, I'm disappointed once again to hear certain factions of our community blame the things that they're disappointed with on racism. Real racism, racism exists in the world. I have to say, and Ms. Alarcon, you and I have had our differences of opinions. I think it's well documented. But this goes for all five of you. I have never seen or heard anything from any of you that I would think is an example of racist behavior. None of you. And I want the people who are watching this at home or will view it later to understand that the only reason that charge is thrown around is because people cannot come up with a fact and logic-based explanation of their position. They're disappointed, and they're intellectually lazy when they go straight to racism when there isn't any evidence of it. It's a horrific thing to say about anybody, especially when it's not true. I personally hope you do do away with this Human Rights Committee because I haven't seen any fruit from it that, that looks like, you know, it's very meaningful at all. It seems like an exercise in DEI, you know, to me. But, and also, you know, I'm on record as saying that I don't want Lancaster and Palmdale to be linked. But there are certain things where it might make sense. And if, if this committee is one of those things, then let's do it. Because I haven't seen anything from our committee that, that tells me it's worth it. It seems like a complete waste of time to me. waste of time to me. And some of the people on that committee, you want to talk about racism, they have literally called, and for those of you who don't know in the audience, my name's Rich Gallego. I'm the head of the Palmdale Freedom Coalition. We have been called in, in writing by some of those folks on the committee, extreme violent right-wing racists, which is patently false. That is not the sort of thing that I think brings the community together. So they shouldn't be on any committee. They shouldn't be serving the city in any capacity. Thank you very much.
All right, do we have any other speakers? Yes, okay. How's it going?
Good, thank you. Um, I wasn't also planning to speak, but I saw opportunity and I love animals. My name is Lucas Contreras, and, uh, eh, what I would like to say is, uh, first, a thank you for the opportunity to have animals that I've had be serviced by the spay and neuter clinic. I was very much benefited by that and I'm very thankful for that. And, uh, though it has been difficult for me to be able to reach them, I've had to wait for sometimes months to be able to reach. And at one point, they said they have like a thousand or so, uh, voicemails in their messages. So by being able to expand that, they could be more efficient. So hopefully, uh, by voicing an opinion, um, that, that can be, uh, done. So, and, um, I want to thank, uh, I understand Catherine Barger is, uh, doing that for the spay and neuter. Hopefully that can be expanded as, as well. Also, um, I've had situations where I saw, um, I used to live, eh, past, uh, Lake LA, like the 200th Street, and people drop off like their animals, and they come to me and I see them like bony and, um, and sick. So I feel pity for them. So I start to feed them, but the problem is I want brought more. And then I tried to have them be secluded. And Ms. Ronda also helped me with that. We bought a cage, but then the dog would come out. The point is that, uh, they had babies and thankfully, though, I was, uh, she helped me out to be able to find a rescue place, um, to, for them, but it was all the way in like Utah, um, for them. So hopefully it can be something more local. I've had, uh, friends that also had to pay, uh, amounts. Uh, it's expensive when they had to pay for their families and things like that. So hopefully by voicing an opinion that that, uh, can take effect and, uh, be more spay and neuter clinics and just, I hated, uh, I mean, God's given us to be protecting of animals. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi.
Hey.
Good evening, Mayor Austin Bishop and Council members. My name is Vicky Ventura, and I am right here right now as a resident of Palmdale. Um, I truly do believe that we need to renew the contract with Los Angeles County Department. But I also think that we need to reinvent ourselves as far as to maybe contracting with our local nonprofit organizations or animal shelters. I want to share a story with you. Uh, my daughter and I found a stray cat, and we were able to take her or him to one of the animal, um, local clinics. Unfortunately, he or she did not make it. However, it was so expensive. We paid out of pocket $1,000 just to have him checked and let us know that it was not gonna make it. I, I, we're very fortunate that we had that kind of funding, but imagine our local residents know way. And that's what we have, the problem that we have. People abandon cats, right, off the streets, somewhere in a trash can. That's inhumane to me and to all of us here. I know we're, we love animals, and we want to do something that it's going to work for our community. So I ask that you reinvent what we're gonna do going forward so that maybe there's incentives for people like us that rescue those animals that are thrown out in the trash or by the street, uh, may you to spay and neuter. I'm sure that, you know, you're all very smart and could all come together and put a plan together that's gonna help all of us resolve those issues. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Can we speak again?
Okay. All right.
So I have, I do have a question. Any of you that spoke, are you currently running a rescue? Oh, so I say, if you are, you didn't say the name, so I didn't know if you had a name you wanted to share with the public.
It's, it's a small, private, I don't have my phone.
Oh, okay.
It's called Dogarachi.
What is it called?
Called Dogarachi Rescue Group.
Okay.
Like 20 to 30 animals.
Okay. I, I just want to get your name out there if you're a rescue and let the public know so that they have options. So.
We also work with Shepherd's File.
Oh, okay, nice.
They can take more animals than I can.
Okay.
She does, she has, she is a partner with the shelter.
All right.
She is one of those who can't do it.
All right, let's get, let's get back to the meeting.
Okay, sorry.
No problem. All right, so do we have any items we want to pull from the agenda? I think I know, might know one of them. Five, three. All right.
Do I get to respond to the, um, lies that were told about me during public comment or not?
Yes, be brief.
All right. So Salva came up this, today and made an accusation against me, which was completely false. Marcus Alvarez, in the, in the past, has posted things online about me saying a derogatory name to Andrea Alarcón. Andrea's never said anything to me. If you look at the transcripts, the written transcripts of that meeting, it says I am unhappy with the behavior from this bench. This bench, the dais, not bitch, bench. So I hope that Salva and Marcus Alvarez and the rest of these organizations will stop lying about me because you forget, my boss sits in the back of this room. I'm not allowed to speak like that. I don't speak like that anyways. So please stop spreading rumors.
Okay, so.
You can see what I said. I said bench.
All right, so we pulled five, three. Let's keep it moving. We pulled five, three. Anything else we want to pull from this agenda or this consent calendar, I mean?
Motion to approve the balance.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second for the balance, including five, three. Let's go ahead and vote.
Start voting. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. That brings us to five, three. So I know we have a staff report coming. But I'm gonna say a few things first. Um, I hear every single one of you, and I agree 100%. We have to look on, at the, what we can do. We gotta focus on solutions. Uh, some of you may or may not know, this is something that's near and dear to my heart. I've been working on it for a while. My girlfriend and I, we do TNR on the weekends. We have been for many years. We gotta look at solutions. I've been spending a lot of time thinking about this, and I think we need to move these animals around. We gotta work with our nonprofits. We have to look on expanding the building, but that's not gonna happen overnight. So in the meantime, we have to look at ways we can get the animals, just not out of the, out of the county, but into other, other states. We need to start moving them around because if we're gonna spend the money to euthanize them, I think it's better off we spend the money to move them to a shelter that is in need of animals. Um, there's, there's so many things we gotta do, but I'm gonna let you dig into the staff report here, and we're gonna have a lengthy discussion, and, and we're gonna figure this out.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council. I'm Carrie German, Public Safety. Before you, we have a request to approve agreement with Los Angeles County Department of Animal Care and Control to provide general animal care and control services for a term of five years from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2029. In addition to staff, we also have representation from the LA County Department of Animal Care and Control. Hold on, let me get this. So we have Director of Animal Care and Control, Marsha Maeda. We have Deputy Director, Raul Rodriguez. We have from grants, or from contracts and grants, the manager, Bradley Kim, Marissa Mueller. And we have our, uh, Palmdale Care Center Manager, Daniel DeBeen, and Lieutenant Joshua Dowd. So we have everybody here for you. Should you have any questions?
The whole team.
Yes.
So you know it's serious. They brought everybody up.
Do they want to speak?
Yes. So do you have, do you have more you're gonna call it, you know?
We have them here. If you have questions for Animal Care and Control, if you have questions for staff.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the council.
I have comments.
All right.
We agree. Something has to be done. We need to identify more space and expand. If you look at the area, I think that there's space there that would make sense. But we, we gotta look into that. We gotta partner with the shelters. I mean, there's, there's a million things that we need to do, and we need to do it. What we can't have is just kick the county away and nothing while we're trying to get to the end goal. So I understand that. My question is, I guess rhetorical unless the city attorney or city manager wants to give me an answer. What gives us more leverage? Not approving this contract so that we can continue to have these conversations to get to that end goal? Because what I don't want to see is we approve it tonight, and then these conversations slip by because we got five years to figure it out. That is unacceptable. So I am actually still in this moment torn on how I'm going to vote because I want to vote in the way that's gonna get us to the end goal, that's gonna get us less euthanization, more space, partners. I guess, I, I. Anybody have guidance for me? Because I'm still undecided. I guess I can wait to hear what my colleagues have to say. But if anybody wants to jump up and tell me how we're gonna get to where we need to get the fastest way possible, I'm all ears.
So I have a question too. Um, if we don't approve this contract, does that mean the shelter shuts down? What happens to those animals? What happens to the building?
Bring and actually defer to LA County. I'm sure they can answer that better than I.
Okay, thank you.
I was told a while ago, it was like a pay-as-you-go plan if we don't. We just get billed as.
It was, it was a month to month, but that would not be, that would not be indefinite.
Right. Okay. Well, let's find out.
Hi, I'm Marsha Maeda, um, Director of Animal Care and Control. Thank you for having us here, and I'm very happy to answer any questions you might have. Um, just to address the first couple that came up, um, you are able to, uh, opt out or resign the contract anytime during the five-year period with 60-day notice. So, uh, we do want a contract in place for liability, for continuity and so forth, but you can resign it later if you decide in a year or two, this isn't working for you any longer. So you do have that, um, option. Um, if, the question was if you stopped using the shelter, we would continue to operate it. Um, we would still bring the county animals from unincorporated areas. We might, um, adjust some of our boundaries to balance population between that and the Lancaster Care Center, but we would still operate the cares, the animal shelter. Um, I'd be happy to answer any other questions. I'd also like to tell you about some of the work we're doing.
Sorry, I have a question just based on what you said. If adjusting the boundaries in the unincorporated areas makes sense to even it out, why aren't we doing that now?
We actually are considering that right now. We're looking at that very closely, and we do anticipate moving, um, animals from Palmdale to some of our other animal care centers. Um, we believe we can move about 1,000, well, dogs, cats aren't really a, a problem, um, a year. Uh, that'd be about 25% of the population. I think that would give a good relief to the Palmdale Care Center. So we're just working on the logistics now, and I think we'll have, um, a plan in place in just a few weeks that we could, uh, get back to you about.
So, and, so let's, let's go backwards a little bit. So I think we're being, we're, we're being reactive of the problem. I like to sometimes think of the source. So let's talk backyard breeders.
Yes.
We need to do more to try to catch it at the source. I've been taught with a lot of my experience in government that it's better to be proactive than reactive. And I think that's something we should start with. I think we need to be taking a closer look at all the backyard breeders. I, I don't, as far as I know, the shelter doesn't do anything as far as, let's say, sting ops, trying to catch them, fining them. If they do get fined, isn't it like $100 or the fines super low? Like the punishment isn't really worth it? Uh, it, it's not really substantial enough for the breeder to say, hey, I'm gonna stop doing this. All these animals have to be coming from somewhere. So I, wouldn't it be smart to try to do what we can to stop this at the source instead of spending millions of dollars to fix it?
Absolutely. And we have done a few things on that. We do do, uh, stings, um, at the Palmdale swap meet, and we've issued a number of citations there and brought people into compliance. And actually, a number of the people were very grateful that we were there because they were accidental litters that they were trying to get rid of, and we provided spay-neuter services to them. So then they didn't have a repeat problem. But we've also begun an illegal animal breeding tip line. It, it rolled out, I believe, in July. Um, we're putting signs on the back of all of our trucks. We've been pushing it through social media, and people can anonymously contact our department and report illegal breeding. Part of the problem is it's hard for us to locate the people ourselves for a couple of reasons. One is if they advertise on Craigslist or the newspaper, all you have is a telephone number. You don't, we don't even know if it's in our jurisdiction. They can be in Kern County, they can be in the City of Los Angeles. That's not our jurisdiction. Um, so tracking that down is really difficult. Um, and then, uh, we don't have the manpower to do that. But the people who are aware of this, volunteers can do that. They can make the phone calls for us, get the information, give us the details, and then we can follow up. And we certainly enforce the breeding ordinances after that.
I, I feel like this is such a, a problem. I mean, if you look at, I, I appreciate the efforts, but it's, it's hard to say it's working when the numbers go up, the contract goes up. It's, it's something I feel like, you know, volunteers shouldn't be doing. We should probably hire private investigators and, and a firm to go after these people. I mean, it'd be in our best interest instead of spending millions of dollars. Um, we, we gotta catch it at the source. I see, I drive around town, you see the dog breeding signs almost everywhere. I know this city manager, last year, I was, I was telling her every, every couple of weeks, and I'm like, up, there's another batch of signs up for, for canine breeding sign.
Mm-hmm.
And canine dogs, and, and yeah.
Yeah, if you report those to us, we'll do our best to follow up. If, if you think they're local, um, we can find out.
I would imagine a lot of them have to be, or, I mean, in the Alamo Valley, a, a lot of people here have larger properties, so it gives them the ability to do so. And it may not be happening within the City of Palmdale, but there's so much space out here. I think that's one of the reasons we have the issue of breeding. Unlike other communities where there's, there's no space, a lot of people live in, in, uh, smaller homes, apartments, and like places in LA, you wouldn't have the space, you would, to have, to breed out here. So I think this is an all-hands-on-deck. We really, in this situation, we have to re-engineer, uh, the business model of, of this particular shelter because it's just not gonna work, yeah, a few years down the line to be paying three, four million dollars to kill animals. It's just, it's unsustainable, it's, it's inhumane, and we're gonna have to figure something out. And in the meantime, because how long do you think it would take to get a building built and find the funding for that?
A couple of years.
A couple of years.
Yeah, assuming we find funding right away.
Right.
Yeah.
So I, I know you have more to tell us, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, you know, we, we're also hoping to find opportunities instead of building a building, like leasing space or, um, you know, I'm hoping a, a box building that might be vacant, that can be repurposed internally and put in, um, kennels, uh, for adoption animals. You know, they've already been spayed and neutered, they're ready to go. So we did that several years ago before the Palmdale Care Center opened. Supervisor Antonovich sponsored the AV Pet Stop, and these were do, dogs that were spayed and neutered, vaccinated, microchipped at the Lancaster Care Center and moved there, and then people could come, adopt, and take it home right away. So we could do the same thing if we find another location to do that. So I, you know, I think an empty big box store that we could put dog housing in and do something like that would be really, um, beneficial and less expensive than building a new facility. So that's something else we're trying to explore. Again, it comes down to funding. But if the city feels like they have some funding available, we'd be very happy to partner with you on that and talk to the county about, um, staffing and seeing if they would be willing to do that.
I mean, at this point, it's, 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 it's a humane movement, but it's also, at the same time, it's financially wise to invest in this because it's gonna, you know, it's gonna help along the way.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry? Did you want to finish your presentation? Oh, thank you. I just wanted to tell you, um, a, a few other things that we're doing. Um, we have almost all of our positions filled at, um, Palmdale. We still have one vacancy that we're working on. Um, we have worked really hard, you know, funding is so difficult, but we've been re, working really hard on getting grant funding from nonprofit foundations and so forth. We did get a one-year intervention specialist position up here to divide their time between Palmdale and Lancaster, but to provide services to people considering surrendering their pets. And what we do with intervention is, you know, find out why are you surrendering it? You can't afford vet care, we'll let us help you with our care voucher. You can't handle the behavior, let us refer you to a trainer, whatever it is. Or even if they really can't keep it, it's a purebred golden retriever. Why don't we refer you to Golden Retriever Rescue? They may be willing to take it in. So whatever we can do to divert intake and, and help people. We also got a grant to hire two, um, full-time groomers, um, one for the North County and one for the South County. And this is something that's been a passion project for me forever because, um, I hate sending home an animal that hasn't had a bath, you know? When you bring a new animal into your home, and if they've just been spayed or neutered, they can't have a bath for 10 days. Um, and then, you know, the new owner's trying to bond with this animal, and it's stinky or it's matted and everything. And, um, animals that come in in that condition, spending. And animals that come in in that condition, spending a couple hours with a groomer or a volunteer or whoever, giving them a bath, making them feel better, their behavior is so much better afterwards. They've had all this TLC. So we're getting those positions filled. We're recruiting for those right now. Supervisor Barker did donate $100,000 to expand spay-neuter in this area. And we also have a nonprofit foundation that supports our department, the Los Angeles County Animal Care Foundation, and they've dedicated $150,000 to support spay-neuter services. So the biggest challenge, quite frankly, is finding veterinarians to perform the service. There's a huge shortage of veterinarians in this country and just finding them to be able to provide the surgeries is a challenge, but we're, we're making it work. We have our Pets Our Family program. We're doing our Vet at the Park where we take our mobile vehicles that were paid for by our foundation. Those are $250,000 vehicles. They go out there, they, we can do more than 300 vaccines, microchips, exams, flea and tick treatment, free food, free pet supplies when we take those out. We've done more in Palmdale, by the end of this year, we'll have done more in Palmdale than any other city. Well, three. And so, you know, we're working really hard on creative innovative solutions and relying a lot on grant funding because there isn't as much county funding and we realize the challenges that you guys have as well. So we're looking at creative solutions to be able to do these things. I did want to talk about the opening on Sundays. The reason that we closed on Sundays is because we lost 57 positions during COVID. You know, every county department had to take a curtailment. We need to have enough registered veterinary technicians every day to be able to do the exit exam on animals when they leave. And we don't have enough to do that late in the day, after 5 o'clock or on the weekends. We're spreading our RVTs too thin and they can't perform their other jobs that they have to do as far as treatments and evaluations and so forth. So that was the reason, it's a staffing issue. We chose Sundays because by far that is the lowest volume day for any transaction at the care centers. People will come in with their families to look at the animals. It's a nice family activity, but we weren't having adoptions, we weren't having return to owners, we weren't selling licenses, all those other things. Monday is a huge return to owner day for people because I think they're, they may go away for the weekend, they come back Sunday night, their pet has gotten loose, they come Mondays. So, you know, it's something we're mindful of and will continue to evaluate, but there was a lot of thought put behind that. And until we have more staffing, then it's, it's going to be difficult. And that's why that day was chosen. You know, we, we can consider a pilot project up here, understanding it's a commuter community and situations up here may be different for your residents, but I don't want to penalize your pet owners who are coming, wanting to find their lost pets and then can't come on the day that's more convenient for them. So, you know, that, that's why we made that decision and, you know, I'm interested in anything you guys have to say about that. And, you know, the same thing for staying opening late. We don't have the RVT staffing to stay open late. Also, we did not get a lot of volume after about 5 o'clock. People just weren't coming that often. We are open on Sundays for rescue groups. They can come seven days a week to get the animals because, you know, it's a different situation. They're coming for a particular animal. We can often do the paperwork really quickly. They know the routine and it's easy to, and we understand that it's often convenient for them. I think that's kind of like the overview, but you may have, you know, many more questions. I'm happy to answer those.
Yeah, absolutely. Let's, counsel?
Thank you, Director, for being here. Prelimarily, I, this has been a very difficult issue for me to grapple with right now. So I'm going to ask that y'all bear with me. I lost my best friend, my dog, two weeks ago.
I'm sorry.
So receiving all your emails and pictures and reading reports and seeing the numbers, those are not just numbers.
Yeah.
And I feel it. So I apologize, I'm trying not to get emotional because I am solution-oriented, for those who know me, that's where I'm headed. But just bear with me if, I need a moment. Thank you, Director, for being here. We're a long ways away from your home, I'm sure, and so we appreciate you being here and you bringing the entire team here to answer questions of the community and of the council. Thank you to all of, all of those in our community who, on a daily basis, you've made this your passion project and you are saving lives. So thank you for what you do. This has been, without a doubt, a widely known problem. I think some of it was, a lot of it was illuminated by an LA Times investigative report that demonstrated incredibly high euthanasia rates, lack of staffing and a variety of things. In response to that, the county supervisors, both Supervisor Han and Supervisor Barker introduced motions. Supervisor Han's motion was specific to the euthanasia rates and directed that the county do a full assessment of how we can reduce euthanasia rates, particularly here in Palmdale. And then, secondly, Supervisor Barker introduced a motion on space because it's, this is a complex issue. And so she directed that the county do also an investigative analysis on how we can possibly, what are the alternatives to establishing additional space? We've got 68 kennels here in Palmdale. The report back in response to Supervisor Barker's motion outlined that we need, in order to, to address the needs in our community, we need an additional 81 kennels. That requires 16,000 square foot space. The parcel that the city of Palmdale transferred to the county, or you guys bought it, but, but it's a six-acre parcel. You guys aren't using it all. There is 2.5 acres that are, that are not being used currently. The report found that that space would be adequate to build the facility. Now, then comes the question of money. So the county's assessment of the cost to build that facility ranges between 25 and 30 million. We independently, the city of Palmdale, a couple months ago, received a report back from, we retained independent consultants to do our own assessment on options so that we could reconfigure the model as we've been talking about. And so we explored a variety of different options, whether we construct a new building or whether we retrofit an existing building, a lot, along the same lines as you mentioned, the pet stop kind of model. The numbers that, that our consultants gave us to buy a facility, to build a new facility, nearing $12 million cost. Much different price tag than what the county opined, but the cost that, to retrofit a building that would be sufficient to offset what's missing at the county is slightly under $6 million. So I think that those numbers are feasible. Measure AV, we, on an annual basis this last budget, we generated $29 million. You know, we, we've prioritized some of, some of these animal care issues as, within the realm of what Measure AV can cover. So what, when I say I'm solution-oriented, I'd like to just posit that maybe we, as a council, direct the city manager to move forward with identifying funds, whether they be in Measure AV or general funder and other, and other sources to, if we want to move the route towards retrofitting a building at the cost of slightly under $6 million so that we can supplement the areas where the county is lacking. Great if we want to move, and we can do that over two fiscal years, maybe a $3 million contribution each year for, for two fiscal years, and then we would have a facility up and running in two years. We could also build a facility for 12 million if we want to, want to spread that out. But my, my request of this council is that we move to direct the city manager to explore these in a much more definitive way and, and bring a report back to us so that we can, we can move forward with one of these options. I don't know which one you guys prefer, retrofit or establishing a building, but we've got to do something. And we keep talking about it and we keep talking, but we gotta, we gotta walk the walk. We've done a lot of talking, but we've got to walk the walk. You know, so I'll leave that on the table. With regard, and also thank you to the staff. I had the opportunity to go by the, the center this afternoon and it was really nice to walk through and talk with your team and see, see the animals in the facility, but also to get a sort of a firsthand feel on solutions. I've, I've received a lot of emails about people saying that there is, you know, the, the accessibility to the public of the adoption spaces, the adoption kennels, it's not, the signage is not exactly right and it, and it really wasn't. I think we kind of agreed, there are easy solutions. We can say, public can, can access this section of the facility and view the kennels without an escort. This way you need an escort and, but people didn't, people don't know off, you know, when they walk through that you can access one side of the, of the center without an escort and you can actually visit some of those kennels and you don't have to wait in line per se for an escort. So I think some of those sort of tangible, sort of low-hanging fruit solutions, I think we can, we can increase the, the light, the viability of adoption. We also spoke about the pictures because I also got emails about, well, if people can't, if people need an escort and they have to go, they don't want to wait for an escort or it takes too long, all they have are those boards with the pictures and the pictures are dark and dreary. They're, thankfully, they received a grant and they received, I mean, you guys, more than welcome, I'm just summarizing what we spoke about today. If you guys want to elaborate on it, they received a grant and they've got GoPro cameras and technology and lighting and they're going to reconfigure the way that they take these photos so that they increase the adoptability in that way. So these are small things, but may have, may open the doors of opportunity to, to adoptability for some of these animals. And then staffing, we spoke, you mentioned it, you said, you kind of glazed over it. Staffing is an issue. The, the report backs to the county identified that at, at our optimal level of staffing, we would need 39 additional positions. Those positions have not yet been created or funded, so we're kind of stuck with what we've got, the limited five. And then you said that all but one is filled. I think in my conversation with staff, they're onboarding three, so we're in a period of transition, but things should pick up in the very near future. But my question is, with regard to staffing, do you have any idea as to whether or not the county is going to invest any money into increasing? Because staffing is an issue here, but it's, it's, it's an issue at all of the facilities. Do you have, is there any, any information that suggests that they are, are actually going to fund some of those, those positions that are necessary?
I don't have any specific information, but as you probably know, the county is facing some very significant lawsuits. More than $3 billion worth of lawsuits from the sexual abuse cases from the probation department and they're trying to figure out how they're going to fund that. And the CEO, Fuzia Davenport, was quoted in the New York, I'm sorry, the LA Times today or yesterday, saying that, you know, it could mean curtailments, it could mean layoffs, it could mean hiring freezes. So I know during COVID, they didn't lay anybody off. They, you know, the county is very hesitant to do that. They, they don't want to see anybody out of a job, but we lost 57 positions, they were all vacant. So, but they're off our books, you know? They're not sitting there waiting for us to fill. We have to fight to get them back. So unfortunately, I think every county department's going to be in that position. But I don't know, I don't know how it's going to come out, but it's definitely going to be a challenge for us.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I think that that response supports the, the suggestion that we move forward independent of the county. Because the county is bogged down in lawsuits and bureaucracy and red tape and their numbers are far exceeded, over double what the estimates of our, our consultants gave us. So again, I would just like to underscore to this council that, that I'm supportive and I hope that you would be supportive too, that we, as a city, move forward in our, with, in our own way is, is one option. We could partner, that would be great. I think probably Supervisor Barker would be helpful. The county may be willing to partner, but we have the, the capacity and the ability and the funding mechanism to do it on our own. And so I would suggest and support that this council take an action tonight to direct that we do that. Not just talk about it, but take an action to do that. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry. Can I go real quick, Richard? Sorry. The independent report that we received that was just referenced was pretty vague and we asked after for more detailed analysis and recommendation. We were told that that is coming. So I just, the reason I bring that up is because is that direction to staff standing? Are we still expecting a more detailed report?
So not necessarily a detailed report, but some solutions based off the report that we have right now. So staff is actively working on different solutions with the animal activist community as well as the county on spay and neuter opportunities, even employing our own vet, partnering with local nonprofits. There's, from flying dogs out to other states, we're looking at every possible option. However, this industry is very, very stressed. And even, we, we had our low-cost spay and neuter program with Karma for a long time and even with all the support we were providing, they were just not able to make ends meet and find the people that they needed to staff it. So we're back to square one there. So it's a very long-winded way of saying we are work on, working on several different avenues every single day and pursuing them aggressively. We hope to bring some of those to you here before the end of the year, some of those solutions.
Okay. And then one last question for our city attorney. Do you agree with that analysis that there is an out in that contract?
Yes.
Great. All right. Mr. Love.
Yeah, good evening and thank you for coming up here. And, you know, actually, I'm attracted to the idea of us doing separate entities for some of the services that we have. We already do it with the library, for instance. We have our own library. And we also have several services that we provide to the community that we collaborate with Lancaster. For instance, our transportation system, AVTA, AVQMD is another example. And perhaps we could look into how we could work together with Lancaster to, to take over this, this, this service. That, that would be one, one thing we could do. The other one is we could form like the Joint Powers Authority with the Antelope Valley Transit Authority where Los Angeles County, City of Lancaster, City of Palmdale, all join together to provide this service. But we obviously have to go in a different direction. I thought that, thank you for addressing the issue of Sundays. There has to be some kind of solution to that day, but I, I thought also that perhaps changing the hours in recognition of the fact that this is a commuter city and a commuter Antelope Valley, and you recognize that and I appreciate you doing that. We have 40,000 to 50,000 vehicles that travel down below for work, right? And so, in fact, many of these people are coming back at 6, 7, 8 o'clock in the evening because they're coming back late. That ought to be looked at by the county. What I'm talking about in terms of finding another solution where I believe that I am thoroughly committed to the idea that we locally can administer our money better than the county can. Okay? I mean, in all sincerity. I mean, it's, it's, it's just true. But we're also exceedingly dependent on LA County. We have the Sheriff's Department, we have the Fire Department, we have animal control. You know, we collaborate in AVTA with AVQMD. Sanitation District is another area that we provide service in collaboration with Lancaster. That is a model that we could look at here. But when we talk about how we can best spend our taxpayers' dollars, just look at the disparity, and you're the representative of the county, nothing personal, right? But the disparity that we suffer in the Antelope Valley from the unhoused issue where we generate seven to eight mil- generate $7 million to $8 million per city to send down to Los Angeles County to get back about maybe a tenth of that money. And not only do we get the benefit of having a small return on the taxpayer's money, but we also get more and more unhoused people from down below coming here. And we're as, as sensitive and understanding of the issue of the humanity, of the suffering of people who are unhoused as anyone. But we have our own folks to deal with. So we don't get the money back for the taxpayer's investment that goes down to LA. And then we also get more and more unhoused on a daily basis. If figures are, as I understand it, we are getting approximately 20 unhoused persons per day from out of the area. And that'll mean Lancaster. That's 7,300 unhoused people that would be added to our community. So I, I agree with Councilwoman Alarcon that we ought to be looking at an independent way of, of doing this. I just wanted to ask a practical question. Thank you for allowing me to get on the soapbox, but it, it's just something that, it's disturbing to me.
Absolutely.
Really.
Sure.
The perspective that we're not important to Los Angeles County, but LA County sure receives a benefit from us. And thank you for that. But in any event, the flat rate for stray or relinquished dogs and cats, when you, when you take in larger animal like horses.
I didn't hear the first part of what you said.
The, the rate for stray or relinquished dogs and cats.
Okay.
Which is $87.17 a day. And if you look at it for eight days, that's, that multiplies out at that rate. Would that be the same rate when you impound larger animals such as horses?
No.
What's the rate for that?
I think, are they included? Yeah.
As other animals.
Sorry?
No charge.
Yeah, we don't charge. We don't charge for the large animals. They're, they're figured into the overhead.
Oh.
You don't, we, we don't get that.
Okay.
Yeah.
The reason I ask is because over the years, I, you know, I'm an attorney, I work at the courthouse, and from time to time, I've, I've gotten clients that have had animals seized from them, for whatever reason, not taking care of them, whatever it is. Some of them have been horses, other, other cattle. And I was just wondering if the city was being saddled when you take an animal in at those rates on a daily basis, because the animal is the subject of, of a case down at the courthouse.
For the livestock? I'm sorry, I'm referring to Brad, because he handles all the billing.
Okay, Brad, come on up then. Is that all right there?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm looking at special intake.
Yes.
And so it's $81, $87.17 unlimited days, but are we, is the city paying for that when an animal is a subject of court action or some other administrative activity?
They, they are, only if it's a cat or dog. So other animals like a horse or livestock is, is in charge to the city even if that's the case. So only in cases if a dog or cat is on a legal hold, then that daily rate will apply.
Okay. Now, from time to time, I've seen the seizing of roosters, because of the fighting of roosters. Are we, is that something that's charged to the city?
Also not charged to the city.
Okay, so just the dogs and cats?
Correct.
Okay. And is there a significant amount of dogs and cats that are, that are kept beyond the eight days? Is that, is that an issue for us up here?
That, that, so it's based on an average length of stay of about 10 days per cat or dog. We bill at a per impound rate, so even if a cat or dog is with us for one day, as opposed to 25 days, it's just a flat per impound rate. The only type the daily rate applies is if it's on legal hold for, for one reason or another, and we have to hold the animal.
Okay, but we would be responsible for any excess days?
Correct.
At that rate?
Correct.
And, and there are some instances where that could go on for quite a few days beyond that period?
Correct. And we do try to notify the cities if we do have animals that are on legal hold, so that you are aware of charges that might be forthcoming.
Okay.
And we try to recover it from the, we try to recover it from the pet owner through the court process.
Uh huh.
And then reimburse the city.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. So first, I suppose I'd say I appreciate what you do. I know that all of you got in this business because you love animals, not because you hate animals, and you want to do the best that you can with what you have. I was wondering, though, with the nationwide shortage of vets, what are you doing to encourage our local high school people? Have you encouraged them in any way to go into the veterinary sciences? My niece is currently at UC Davis, trying to be veterinarian. It's very costly. She decided to do it all on her own. She never got any encouragement from her school or from anyone else. If we have a shortage, we need groups like you to encourage our high school students that this, this is a career option for you. Maybe the county can partner with the city. We can come up with scholarships, because it's very pricey. Or try to get a commitment that they'll come back and work for the county, or whatever the case may be. But there's a lot of options out there. You can't just say we have a shortage and then do nothing about it. So we, we need to work collaboratively to try and encourage people to get into this field. It is a heartbreaking field. When I was a younger person, a lot younger, I was a vet tech, worked for Gaylord Brown at, at Delta Rescue. And it was heartbreaking, because you see a lot of animal abuse, you have to put animals down. It's emotionally draining. It's a very tough spot to be in. But I think that we can do more to encourage people to see the positive side of it and, and try to get into the business. The other thing I want to bring up is, because you are county, we used to have a county program, I worked for the Sheriff's Department, and our jails used to have a program where they would train inmates to groom. And I think, if we're still doing that, I don't know if we still are or not, but what an opportunity to have people practice grooming when you need people to groom. I think that it's a very symbiotic relationship that you could create. So maybe we could look into that. We also have a local prison where they try to do inmate training, so that they have some type of skill when they do reentry when they're released, and maybe we could reach out to them and include them in, in some of these, these grooming and training projects. I'm just throwing that out there as possible solutions, because I know we used to have that program. So I do appreciate what you're doing, but my biggest complaint is the hours. 11 to 5 is not appropriate for this community. People can't get there. Often times, by the time a person can get there, the animal that they wanted is gone. So we need to do better. There are people that want, want to get animals from the pound, and because they can't, they go to breeders, because they don't feel like they have an option. So you, you can't, it's like, how do you punish breeders when people keep coming to you, trying to get an animal, and they keep being turned away? And then they're basically forced to drive to Oregon, drive to Arizona, wherever, to get a dog from a breeder, because they just couldn't get into the local shelter. So we've got to do better. I don't know if you could operate it, like have a volunteer, open the door, answer the phone, you know, whatever it takes. There's got to be a way. So if, if we can help you with that, maybe we can work something out. So, but 11 to 5 is just not appropriate.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have an additional question. So we have, we're entering into a five-year agreement with you. We do have the, we have the right to opt out, as has been pointed out. But nevertheless, every year, it's subject to a new imposition of budget, essentially, right? Because it's almost, it's almost a take it or leave it. It's not like the City of Palmdale is in a great negotiating position with LA County regarding animal care. So every year, this could just keep going up. There is no built-in, no more than kind of clause to the contract, right?
No. What this is, is we had a consultant evaluate our billing rate methodology, and the consultant, and we knew, the county was subsidizing about 50% of the city costs across the board for every city. And the, so we needed to develop a new billing rate methodology that was fair for the county and as painless as possible for the cities. So the consultant came up with several scenarios. We selected the scenario that caused the least pain for the cities. The consultant recommended a three-year step-up plan to bring the cities up to their full cost, the full cost recovery. The Board of Supervisors felt that was too fast. They extended it to six years to give the cities more time to adjust to these cost increases. So that's what these step-ups have been each year. We're now at the fourth, yeah, fourth step. So it's a total of six steps. So we're now at the fourth step. So there will be a fifth step and a sixth step. And then after that, it'll just be a regular cost of living increases after that.
Hmm.
So right now, we're subsidizing 20% of the city costs. We're, you're paying 80% of your cost.
And that's part of this contract? Is that built into this contract, the 20%?
Um, is it built, yeah.
Part of the billing rate.
It's part of the billing rate, yeah, that's.
Part of the billing rate. Okay, but it's not, it's not called out separately in another part of the contract?
It's an attachment of the contract.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
It's an attachment of the contract, so.
It's an attachment to the contract.
Uh huh, okay. All right. Well, that's a concern as well, overall. So thank you.
So when you're money people, I don't know who does, you're probably not here, but when they're calculating these formulas, when we have these mega lawsuits out there just dangling around, we don't know what's going to become of them. If you have to pay those lawsuits, does that, is it, is it the trickle-down effect, when all of a sudden now our contract's going to go up because the county had to pay for a bunch of lawsuits? I, I don't know how that works, but I don't think the cities should get punished for lawsuits that had nothing to do with us.
Right. I don't know exactly how the county plans to address that. I mean, it's a pretty sophisticated funding challenge that they're, I know they're considering taking out liability bonds and, and, you know, all sorts of strategies to do that. What I think overall may happen is that each department will have to have some cutbacks, but it doesn't mean your prices go up.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Boswick, are you listening?
There he is.
Okay, I'm sorry. Two things. One, a quick question. Right now, we're month-to-month, but you want us to switch to a contract where we have an out. What's the difference? What's the added benefit to the City of Palmdale?
Well, we don't do month-to-month indefinitely. We, we do it as a courtesy when we're between contracts as, because we understand it's difficult to get them on the agenda in the time period necessary. Sometimes there's more discussion that has to happen. So we do it as a courtesy, as kind of a spread over until we get the next contract in place. But we need to have the contracts in place. We, we do our work through contracts, you know? That's the expectation of the county. So, you know, we couldn't do month-to-month indefinitely.
So if I can just follow up, I, I need clarification. I think my colleague, Councilmember Olson, asked a very specific question of our city attorney. I'm not sure that, that, that either I understand, maybe I'm misreading the contract, or maybe the answer wasn't fully informed. As I'm reading, the right of termination under this contract, there are three outs. The first out is 60 days from the July 1 of every fiscal year. That's Provision 7.1. 60 days also notice from an, a time of when, when we get notice of an increase in rates is 60 days. But the provision that we are afforded to terminate with or without cause is 180 days. I read that in Section 7.3. So the question was, do we have 60 days? He said yes. Is that right? I don't think that that's an accurate reading of this contract. I think the actual answer is that we would have 180 days awaiting period. So it's not as quick a turnaround as has been articulated.
One last thing. I'm sorry, but I just have to say this. I want to thank the mayor for his leadership in this area. Ever since I've known him, he's been sounding the alarms, and this is something he's cared about and has been passionate about and has been talking about ever since I know him. So thank you for what you and your girlfriend do for the community with your own trap and release and knowledge and understanding and concern.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right. So let me just touch base on a few things. Also, thank you for coming out. I think we all want to be a good partner with the shelter, and we all want to figure this out. And I appreciate everyone showing up today, because we didn't have that in the past. And that's one thing, that's one way we get changes in our community, is by showing up. And, and you guys have done that. All right, so let's touch base on something. $2 million liability insurance policy. What can we do to be better partners with our rescue groups and our nonprofits? Because right now, I've been told by a lot of them, they don't feel like they're partners. It feels like there's a separation. Even when I look at the room right now, you've got Animal Control over here, and you've got the nonprofits and the rescues. What can we do to bring that together and foster that partnership? And just reform in general, you have a whole room of people here that are just asking for some reform and a, and a way to do business differently with the shelter. So what, what can you do for us in good faith tonight to know that we're going to be heading down the right path?
Sure. Well, we sat where they told us to, so. There's nothing to be read into that.
More of the, you know, the spiritual meaning behind it, I guess.
Yeah, I understand. Actually, we just spent a lot of time working with an advisory committee and reviewing our adoption partner guidelines and rules of how we work with our adoption partners. And we did make a number of modifications to our adoption partner program to ease or ease up procedures and, and rules and so forth. For example, they used to have to wait 48 hours to give the public an opportunity to adopt an animal before they could pull it, unless it was rescue only. Now, we've removed that. They can take it immediately. The $2 million, that's because, you know, there was a recent lawsuit, case law that came to the Court of Appeal that upheld it, and it found that animal shelters have no discretion in releasing aggressive and vicious dogs to rescue groups. No discretion. It could have killed a person if they demand the animal, then we have to give it to them. So our, the county has to be protected, because there have been major lawsuits. And you might have seen, even not death lawsuits, the City of LA has had three in the last couple of years. $7 million, $6 million, and more than that, I want to say 12. A lot more than $2 million. So we have been sued in the past when rescue groups have taken animals from us and failed to follow the conditions we placed about placing that, around that animal, no kids, you know, so forth. And people were harmed, seriously. So we have to have that protection in place.
So there's no release of liability they sign? There's nothing that can protect the county from that?
Well, that doesn't stop people from suing us.
Right, of course.
I mean, they may release themselves, but the victim didn't release us, so.
Right.
Yeah. But they are required under that contract to release the, the county of liability. They are required to do that. But we still get sued, and we still get pulled into these lawsuits.
Right. So I know there's some, some stuff that we can do on our end. I know we've already had to implement some of this stuff with the Sheriff's Department, with our code enforcement officers. You saw here earlier how, same thing, Sheriff's Department, is they're low staff, everyone is. So we're using our code enforcement officers to help with some of the, the lower priority calls. And that's working well. So I'd imagine we'd have to mirror that and, and do something similar to where we partnership and collaborate with the county, because, I mean, you've pretty much verified it for everyone in the room in the community tonight, that the shelter doesn't really have the staff to take this on. So from what I'm understanding, we need a partnership in addition to a lot of reform in the way we're handling. We need almost total reform. Can you help us get that? What, I think that's what the.
We're very, yeah, we're very committed to working with all of you, with the city. We really appreciate the city's interest in this. You know, not all cities give us this kind of attention. They don't even want to see us here at the city council. We're grateful for the opportunity to talk to you about our problems and hear that you're willing to work with us on that. So absolutely.
So, yeah, we definitely need to make some changes, especially when we hear that, that our numbers are the highest in, in all the shelters. We're all passionate here, and we all want to see this, we want, we want to see this get resolved. We don't want to be known for having the highest numbers.
So if I could just, a follow-up. Yes, thank you. We are all very passionate about this issue. And to that point, the contract that's before us today is, essentially mirrors what we had in place previously. But it affords us the opportunity to have in-person meetings every quarter, a virtual meeting every month. The last time this matter came before us, I was advised that we haven't been capitalizing on that opportunity. So I would like to personally, and I would hope that the, the council supports me in this, and that we ask that staff capitalize and, and schedule those meetings and maintain and maintain regular dialogue with the county in utilizing that, you know, level of communication so that we can maybe make changes, you know, periodically over the course of each fiscal year. But maintaining that line of communication, I think, is really important. And you guys afford us the opportunity, but we haven't been using it. And I think it's a lost opportunity when we do that.
I think we have had lots of conversations with their staff. I have to say, Carrie has been very supportive and a really good source of information and guidance in communicating, you know, the city's intentions and wishes. So, you know, we appreciate that dialogue and we'll absolutely continue doing that.
Great. Yes.
All right, Vet at the Park was a huge success. Long lines. Can we do more of those?
If we have the funding, yes, it's all grant-funded. So if we can, we're starting to see the grants taper off a little bit on that. There's two challenges is getting the grant funding to do it. If the city is willing to sponsor one, that would be absolutely doable. And then also finding the veterinarians to do that. But we work with a veterinary contracting service that, you know, as long as they can find the people, we could pull it together. Yeah.
What's the cost on something like that? Roundabout. I know it won't be exact, but.
I think around $6,000 or $7,000.
Six or seven?
Let's just.
I thought it'd be way more than that. Come on, guys. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I think we're off to a good start. I personally want to be a good partner with the shelter and see this through. I want to see these numbers lower and I don't want to see our bill to keep increasing into the future. I think we owe it to the animals. We owe it to our city that we take this problem head-on and we do what we can to help resolve it.
But right now, it would be helpful if we could find you a box building somewhere to expand kettle space. That would be very helpful to you guys.
Yes.
Okay.
And listen, yeah, we got to go back to the drawing board with our consultant. But that's another discussion.
Okay.
So, anybody else?
But before, I think it's sort of works in tandem with this item. So before we move to consider or take a vote on whether or not we adopt the contract, I'd like to move that because the mid-year budget review is right around the corner in the next few months, that we direct our city manager to report back specifically on, you know, potential options for capital investment in either a new building or a lease retrofit of an existing building. That specific question.
All right. Should we do it during this item or should we add it in at the end for future agendas?
No. You want to do it like.
We can do it as part of the, it's a motion. They just need a second.
Let me make sure, city attorney, I just want to make sure we do it right because I've never done.
To be most technically correct, under the Brown Act, you would add it as you are going to reference mayor under future agendas. This direction isn't agendized. The public may want to give input. So yes, the Brown Act very clearly.
Okay.
We could move to adopt the contract subject to directing an amendment to add that we add direction to the city manager report back prior to the presentation of the mid-year budget review on capital investment for an animal shelter.
Is that enough time?
We will review the entire budget through the mid-year process. And normally, we have large increases. This is a big increase that we're talking about, 6 million or 12 million on a budget that's already adopted. So I just want to set the expectation that meeting a request for $12 million potentially or $6 million in a mid-year budget would be a very hard thing to do, but it could be parsed out over quarters or years.
Over various fiscal years. Correct.
Okay. Is it okay that we add that in? I just want to make sure.
I would defer to the attorney on that. I've seen it done both ways.
It's close enough. Technically, it's not right, but it's not worth making an issue of.
Okay, no problem. All right, so we have a motion with an amendment. We got a second. We're moving. All right, here we go. Let's go ahead and vote.
Okay, we want to add that information in.
Yes.
Director City Manager.
Yep.
To consider options for expansion during the mid-year budgeting process.
Waiting in suspense.
Oh, go ahead. Start voting.
And while we wait, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Motion's unanimous.
It warms my heart to see the community respond because that wasn't always the case years ago. So thank you for being here. All right.
Go home, hug your pets.
Okay, thank you very much. Passes. Five yes. Takes us to item 6.1, our public hearing. Madam clerk.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sofia Reyes, Director of Neighborhood Services. We are requesting a public hearing to receive community input on the needs and priorities for inclusion in the 2025 to 2029 five-year consolidated plan and the 2025 to 2026 action plan. The city receives annual allocations for federal funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Can we wait till this?
Yeah, let's just let the room clear too.
Sorry.
That's all right. Thank you for coming up, everyone. Get home safe.
Okay. The city of Palmdale receives annual allocations of federal funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. There's CDBG, our Community Development Block Grant Program, and the Home Investment Partnership Programs. And these funds are essential in use for developing local programs, addressing affordable housing, public service, and infrastructure improvement needs. To continue receiving these funds, the city must prepare and submit a consolidated plan and an annual action plan and at the end of the year, a consolidated annual performance evaluation report. These documents are part of our strategic framework. And the consolidated plan outlines the city's housing and community development needs and proposes strategies for using HUD funds to address these needs over the five-year period. We are required to conduct at least one public hearing before publishing the draft consolidated plan and action plan. We have also conducted two community meetings to gather feedback from residents. The first meeting was held on September 24, 2024. Second meeting, September 25, 2024. And we also have a survey that's available on the city's website and in paper format at various venues of the city. We will also hold two stakeholder meetings with nonprofit partners and also with our county partners. Staff's available for questions.
All right, council? All right, do we open the public hearing? Right? All right, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Receive public testimony.
We have no speaker cards on the side, I'm mayor.
Okay. Nobody to speak. Let's go ahead and close the public hearing. Anything from council?
Yeah, I mean, and I don't do this, it doesn't give me any pleasure to do this. But this is another instance where I don't know that we have done sufficient community outreach in my briefing with the team, the public hearings and the outreach meetings that were held. One person attended the one on September 24th. One person attended the one on September 25th. We have a population of 170,000 people. This is a five-year plan that will affect the low-income and moderate-income residents of our community. There's got to be more folks that are interested in housing policy. What is the future of what housing will be for them? And, you know, rental assistance program, mortgage assistance program, all of these various programs. A few, was it, I think I have it here, it's escaping me, but I want to say it was two months ago or a month and a half ago. We had, which is a report that goes along with the consolidated plan, is the CAPER report. That's the report that when I looked, I mentioned it during the council meeting, that of the people that were assisted through all of those housing programs, there were two Latinos. I think that there is a significant gap in our outreach efforts. I would really like, and I feel like a broken record when I do this every time these housing matters come before us. But I think we need to develop a much more strategic outreach process as it relates to these housing matters because they are critical. Housing is an essential quality of life issue for all of us, but particularly our working-class community. And we've got to do better. Getting one person to comment at each public outreach meeting and then to develop a five-year plan and check off a box that we've got public input, I don't think that that's sufficient. And so I'm begging, imploring that we do something more, we do something better, we do something different, we develop an actual plan. We just retained a $3 million communications team to do outreach work and yet these two meetings last week had one person. There's got to be ways to reach segments of our community, the non-traditional segments of our community and bring them into the fold and bring them into the conversation so that we can understand their needs more clearly. So I guess we had a public hearing today, so I know there's no, you know, formal action, but I would like to request, and I don't know, move, and he's probably going to say I can't move, but that we direct staff to develop a strategic plan as to how to reach, you know, these communities in a much more effective way. Because two people publicly commenting on housing, how we spend our CDBG money and our home partnership monies, which exceeds millions.
I couldn't agree more. I've always said, since I've gotten involved, participation in local government at a local level, numbers aren't high. You know, we have, you know, I can list the people who are usually engaged in our community on, you know, probably on both my hands. There's, I wish there was more people that were willing to get in here and do that. And all aspects of local government, school boards, water boards, city boards. I wish we had a higher level of engagement. I've been trying to figure that out for many years. How do we bring people into the fold and make people aware that, hey, there's local government here? We can impact change at a local level, but.
There are resources available. I mean, when we reviewed that CAPER report, there was money left on the table for the mortgages assistance programs, for the rental assistance programs. And I think in part, that is due to, you know, a sort of, you know, insufficient outreach program.
Yeah. Councilmember Olson, I saw you turn.
You weren't here when we received that CAPER report, I believe?
I was not here.
And so there was a question about some of the statistics that only two Latino participants received. Have you looked into that? Are you made aware of the concerns? Have you validated those numbers?
We did check and we did receive updated reports and provide updated reports.
So council, at your last city council meeting, you were provided a memo on your dais that showed that the numbers didn't upload into the spreadsheet appropriately and nearly 3,000 Latinos were, I believe, don't quote the exact number, but nearly half were Latino.
Our South, Antelope Valley.
So I have the report in front of me because I went back to our agenda of September 4th and I pulled the report. How it could be 3,000? The total number was 9,000. There are 2,000 African-Americans. I mean, that number doesn't add up.
So we provided a revised, I don't have it in front of me this evening. It was provided to you at the last meeting on the dais with a revised memo with the accurate numbers because some of them didn't upload into the spreadsheet correctly when we brought it to you in the first meeting in September. We corrected it at the second meeting in September.
Okay, I never received a memo on the dais.
It was sitting on the dais for all five of you.
But in any case, look, so that's just one point and I'll get the memo at some point. But it probably should have been presented to us in public forum as like a corrected item so that everybody is privy to the information.
It was entered into the formal record as well. And I also want to clarify one thing. We did not adopt a $3 million TRP annual contract for communications.
Not annual contract.
One million per year, just like this, we're talking about one year at a time as well.
Okay, but, okay, so $1 million a year for communication services, they should be able to reach out to communities at a better rate.
Maybe recognize, all right, thank you. Yeah, I believe that there was a revised correction to that and the numbers are substantially more than Ms. Alarcon has indicated. I believe that there is a sufficient, well, perhaps not sufficient, but that there is a substantial amount of outreach on various programs for the city, including CDBG and the home program. And I have to say this, and I say this with some trepidation. There's also a responsibility by the community to respond to information that is being provided. The mayor and I get on the Spanish radio every month and we talk about all these different programs. And I believe that that program is, it has a listener base and we urge them to, one, come to the council meetings and to attend all of these different things that are going on in the city, very, very many things. And in some areas, we get a tremendous response. For example, some of the things that we have at the amphitheater from the community, all across the board. It just depends on what the interest is, right? Now, obviously, to us, it's extremely important that people come in here and participate in the important issues that we deal with here, such as the animal folks that were here today. They respond. They have a keen interest. And yet, if there were maybe 10 from the animal people, the people that are concerned with animal care and the things that are going on, the inadequacies of our caring for the animals, there's probably thousands in Palmdale that have that concern, right? So we tried to do as much as possible, and I think we ought to outline what the city does do to encourage the people to come out and speak to the CDBG program. And I would think that there is a substantial amount of effort on the part of the city to get people to come in, but the community itself has a responsibility as well. It's not all a one-way street. And then probably, and this is something that maybe we ought to do as individuals on the city council, is go and bring people in. In fact, Ms. Alarcon sometimes is very effective in that when it promotes her interest, right? She gets people here. So we could do that on an issue like this one. Let's go get people that are interested and concerned about whether the allocation of CDBG is sufficient for any community. And our responsibility is across the board.
And thank you for saying that because actually, in the briefing yesterday, I offered myself to the staff. I said, I will do whatever I need to do to go out in the community, give us a date, give us a place, a location. I will be there. I will market it. I will do what I have to do to reach out to the communities in need. The people that are affected by these policies and these funding sources are people that are hard-working, middle-class people, sometimes have two jobs, three jobs. But you've got to be, you've got to know how to reach them and there are community organizations that have direct access to them. And I put myself, I volunteered myself. I said, I will do, give me the date and time. I will be there. I will market it. I will go hand out flyers. I will do what I got to do so that we get actual input from people who are going to be affected by these programs. So yes, but it's not just to serve my own personal needs.
Yeah, so long as it's for the benefit.
These funds are important.
So long as it's for the benefit of the entire community and not for the aggrandizement of a particular person on the council, fantastic. We should do that, such as what's happening right now with Neighborhood Watch. You know, there's an outreach effort. The community is responding, right? They respond to that because they're concerned about security, right? So it just depends on the area. So, yeah, we can all go out and get a lot of our supporters to attend a particular thing. I'm talking about the common, everyday, hard-working people that have two or three jobs or one job that takes up 70 hours a week down below someplace and come dog-tired back to their homes and maybe have to take their kids to soccer or Little League or some other thing. CDBG may not be on a very high priority for people like that. I mean, we can all turn out our supporters for any particular event. I'm talking about bringing in people that are just the people that are out there.
So I have some, sorry, I'm losing my voice. So I have some ideas that might help. If we all think about before we got into politics or on the council, what was our daily life like? We go to work, we come home, we go to the grocery store, we get gas, we get the kids fed, get the kids to bed. fed, get the kids to bed. The last thing we want to do is log into, no offense, to the City of Palmdale website to find out what's going on. But the one thing, as a single mom, that I paid attention to was whatever the school sent home in that backpack. If we could partner with the schools saying, hey, you know, we have this topic coming up at City Hall, we'd love to get some input and we utilize, I don't know if the schools will participate or not, but their families, they're in need, they need housing, they have homes, whatever the case may be, I think this school is a huge resource. And, you know, we have passed through funds to the schools, we're partners with them and I would like to see them partner with us. Other things we can do is, we've got all these new electronic billboards, why not have a splash page that says, hey, we have a hearing coming up on topic X, Y, or Z? And just so, you know, if they're sitting at a red light, they might glance over at it and see that something's coming up. There are a lot of things that we could do that's outside the box. But yeah, if you think about how we were before we got on the council, the last thing we wanted to do was come home after a long day and start thinking politics and housing and unless you have a flyer or something to keep it, you know, top of mind, you'd forget about it by the time the event came. So, yeah, there's problems, yeah, we can do a little bit better outreach and like Andrea says, we can all try to do more as council people, but we also need to include our commissions and our committees because we can bring flyers to their meetings, I think, I don't know if it's allowed, and let them know, hey, you know, on your way out, take a flyer because we have a hearing coming up on topic X, Y, or Z. Why not use, if you have people at a community gathering, let's share some more information with them while they're there. Just an idea.
And just to dovetail off of that, I think the other piece in terms of marketing that's really important, nobody knows what a consolidated plan is. Like if you just say, we're going to be discussing the consolidated plan, regular folks don't know what a consolidated plan is. We've got to do better in terms of marketing. Talk about, this is going, housing issues, this is going to affect low-income communities, this is going to affect renters, this is going to affect tenant rights, this is going to affect, I mean, we've got to be a little bit more thoughtful in terms of how we market some of these events. If you just say, we're having a public hearing on the consolidated plan, which is why we had nobody who even commented on that, and I guarantee you, there are people in here who have expertise in housing that may have wanted to offer some comment on it but didn't know what the consolidated plan was. So we've got to be better at saying, you know, what these public hearings, on the agenda, articulating it clear in our flyers, in our outreach efforts, what exactly are we going to, are we asking them to come in to talk about?
Yeah, I think the working schedule is a real thing. Councilmember Benton Court, that's an excellent idea with the schools, by the way.
Yeah.
Because we always check our kids' backpacks. When they come home, give me that flyer, I'll read it.
Ms. Perez, I wonder if we can have a report on the efforts that are actually made to, you know, to spread the information and the attempts to bring people in. So we'll know exactly what we're talking about instead of speculating.
I believe Sophia can speak to that as well, and I also want to just highlight one thing that she said that we haven't talked about, she brought in our community partners. So she brought in LASSA and she brought in Valley Oasis and she brought in other agencies that also get it out to their constituents as well, but I can let her to speak to it or we can provide a written report at a later date.
Yes, thank you, appreciate that.
Well, the efforts that we have is public notice, also, we've requested social media. So it continues to have social media announcing our survey. And more, we receive more response to the surveys than we do through people actually coming to our meetings. So our outreach efforts are higher on survey aspect of it. So what we're doing is we have them with the QR code and the paper copies at the parks and the activity centers, at Legacy Commons, we're providing them at Kaleidoscope. So there, when we have people stopping by the table, we will have more people with the opportunity to take the survey by taking the QR code. We're working with Saves to have the QR code available so that their constituents, when they're sitting there waiting for their turn to be assisted, that they are able to maybe pass the time with their cellphone and be able to take the survey and work with it. So we are doing outreach efforts with the survey. It's also on the front page of our city's webpage. And we have received to date 80 responses to the survey. We are trying to get it out as far as possible and we will continue working with our community partners to have them aware and having their constituency aware of our requests to look into, you know, what do we need in affordable housing, what do we need in infrastructure and public service?
Okay. Sorry, this public hearing is the first of how many?
This is the first public hearing, the second public hearing will be when we bring the consolidated plan, but we are having community meetings and one of the considerations that we are having is trying to have maybe one more community meeting.
Okay, that was the question?
We've tried to have it virtual and as well as in person for the community meetings so that we could provide people more of an opportunity to come in.
Is there a way to do it hybrid?
Our stakeholder meetings will probably be hybrid because we find that people are pushed for times with back-to-back meetings, so we are looking at hybrid meetings so that they are able to come in person and virtually.
Okay.
Could we do outreach meetings, in other words, community meetings in each of the districts like we do the Neighborhood Watch?
We can look into that, sir.
Okay, and so then we can urge our communities in each of the districts to attend.
No, I know there's nothing to vote on, but thank you. You've been, Sophia, you've been with the city for a long time and you do great work for us.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mayor and counsel, we have a couple of individuals who have now turned, or a couple of individuals who would like to speak on this item. We have one speaker card and another individual in the audience who would like to speak.
Yeah, I'd like to hear them. City attorney, it's okay if we reopen public comment, right?
Correct.
Okay, I got the nod. All right, let's hear it.
We have Eugene Hernandez. And after him, Ms. Ayesha Jones.
Yeah, I think it's a low blow, Richard, for you to attack Andrea for attracting more people to this meeting. You know, you're a lecturer at St. Mary's Church, I go there, there's thousands of people who attend that church. And by the way, I don't listen to Spanish radio, so I don't know where you think you're reaching us through, you speak Spanish radio, but you could easily pass out leaflets there for the thousands of people who attend that church and use the church hall to explain these meetings. And I take exception with Sophia's report. I had never heard that they were having these hearings. You know, I read the paper constantly, I didn't see any announcement there, and I think that Sophia should go to the organizations, for instance, SALVA, and announce that we want community input, but the city's doing nothing about this. It's all hush-hush, you're going to take a position on this and you have done nothing to reach the community. And it has been said, there's thousands and thousands of Latinos who reside here, many are impoverished, they could be, their input could be attracted by the city. Instead, you have nonsense events happening across the street at the park that have no merit into the lives of people. Why don't you have a mass meeting at this park across the street to talk about this? You know, does it ever enter your head to actually reach the community that way? Have a public meeting or have one at Antelope Valley College about this? Because that's how you reach the people, you know, or go to PTA meetings from the schools and Parents Committee. But otherwise, you just don't want the input of the community, it's very obvious.
All right, next speaker.
Hi. Hi, good evening, everybody. Ms. Perez touched a little bit on what I was going to say. I was just wondering, had they reached out to the different nonprofits that work with low income? Because in my experience working with several nonprofits, that's how we got a lot of stuff done. Most of the nonprofits that I were bigger in, we were more big in LA City Council, not Palmdale, so that's why you didn't see me here a lot. I didn't really know a lot about Palmdale at all, to be honest, and I'm born and raised here. So a lot of people, as Ms. Benton Court had touched on, we just work and we don't get the information. But I think what will help is if they get the information to the nonprofits like LASSA, Valley Oasis, also LACTA, all the people, you know, Mental Health of America, Volunteers of America, that work with housing, because they have meetings twice a month in their coordinated entry system, meetings where they put information out and it goes to everybody. It goes to DCFS, it goes to the animal care, it goes to the sheriffs, it goes to all the other nonprofits that are out here in these meetings and they share this information and with that said, then they share it with their clients. And so I think it's a subject that we need that. We need, I'm a huge advocate for housing, it's what I really have a passion for, and I think we need the word out because as we've stated, Antelope Valley is the highest right now with people that are homeless. And how else are we going to get that information out? You know, you have all these nonprofits helping them get jobs, helping them get their social security, helping them get their IDs, and then there's no housing. And so they don't know where to start, and I think that would be a good way to start, maybe get a representative. I would volunteer if I can, I don't know if I can, but I believe in the word of mouth. You know, sometimes we don't pay attention, I don't even pay attention to social media. I post everything, but I don't always read everything. So I think word of mouth is kind of like the best thing, you know, get with like a good LASSA representative, a good Valley Oasis representative, and then let them get the words out and report back to you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Sotterstake?
Hello, sir.
I was mentioning about civic involvement. Well, my interest in civic affairs started because there was nothing on Netflix. And yes, the Brown Act does permit you to chuckle. But guffaw, I don't think so. No, I wanted to address general government-assisted housing. This is disadvantageous to three groups. The recipients, because it makes them dependent on the government. The taxpayers, because they have to pay for it. And the neighbors, because this can damage a neighborhood. And I have personal experience, not just in my neighborhood, but at my house with what those who receive government housing assistance can do to the place. Fortunately, I left Ms. Alarcon's district and the other went a little bit farther west and was able to move out to Mr. Loa's district, which doesn't have extreme problems with government housing assistance. But also, I have a partial solution to our pet care problems. Feed the roosters to the dogs and cats. Thank you.
No more speaker cards. Mayor and counsel.
Okay. All right, so there's no action to take on this?
No.
Okay. So we're going to be looking for more community involvement as this continues?
You need to close the hearing.
Oh, so we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing? Do we need to vote on that or we're just going to close it? All right, so we're going to close the hearing. I'm number seven, new business. Madam Clerk, do you want to read the ordinance?
No, mayor, that's not required.
Oh, okay. All right, so staff report.
I'll start and certainly have the assistance of the city manager. This takes us back as an action, probably most primarily to the joint council meetings between City of Lancaster and City of Palmdale, I don't know, about a year and a half ago over at the college. And since then, the council's been very clear in public discussions, public meetings, that where it is possible to join, link up with City of Lancaster to best serve the Antelope Valley, that should be considered. The discussions commenced with City of Lancaster, we'll say about a year ago, nine months ago, looking at their Social Equity Commission, looking at the city's Human Rights Advisory Committee, and administratively, it was thought they would fit together well, cut out redundancies, go for efficiencies. And so to that end, following that general policy of when possible, we present to you this notion of repealing the commonly-called H-RAC ordinance. I talked with the Lancaster city attorney today around noon. They have agendized essentially a twin of this for their next meeting. It should be noted that each city council, if you act on this, will repeal the ordinance for those bodies. That's where you're stopping, because there's the two jurisdictions trying to avoid complications and conflicts between councils, the city managers, the administrative staffs of both, will work together to create the new, if you will, committee. I don't have a name for it, but it will be handled administratively, you're not ordering it. We wanted to make sure the public know that it wasn't forgotten, this isn't something disappearing, this is just something taking a different form, a different shape to, as we believe, better serve the whole valley. To that end, I guess ultimately if it proves not to be beneficial, you can always recreate each city's bodies. But this follows, again, that general policy decision we've had to consolidate for the best of all when possible, so there you have it.
Okay, council discussion or anything from the city manager?
Other than to say, I think that we've even touched on it a little bit tonight, the value of forming regional bodies in many instances so that we can speak with one voice and to others in the area and speak strongly and get our fair share, this is just another step in that direction, where it makes sense, and for us, this one made sense.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's a good way to collaborate and I think it encourages inclusivity between both cities, between the entire valley. Council members?
And the county.
And the county.
Sure.
Yeah, sure. I'd like to speak to it, mayor.
Sure.
There's, I've said in the past, you know, that the issues that affect the community don't stop at Avenue M, at Columbia Way, they don't stop there. I mean, if there's problems with law enforcement or the security issues, there's, whatever kind of issue that confronts the community, it doesn't stop at Avenue M. It sometimes crosses both ways and oftentimes, in fact. So the issue of trying to address the issue of these communities that need to be raised, need to be put in a better light here in the Antelope Valley and across LA County for that matter, is best addressed, I think, when we have the entire Antelope Valley involved in that rather than just each city separately dealing with it. I think we're trying to overcome, there was a comment earlier on that one racial group may be antagonistic to another racial group. Well, we need to get our people together to address that, to talk about it, to see that the issues that affect one community also affect another community and trying to reach solutions together rather than being apart and separate. So that's, I think this is a good move in the right direction and it's consistent with approaching things on a regional, approaching issues on a regional basis instead of each city just pursuing its own course separately. Thank you.
Yeah, so a couple of things. I don't think there's any doubt, and I would like to think that my colleagues agree, that there are existing human rights concerns that are prevalent in our community as they relate to the LGBTQ plus community, as they relate to the immigrant population, as they relate to use of force and law enforcement issues in the Department of Justice settlement agreement and, you know, continuing reports about potential human rights concerns with regard to those matters. Human Rights Commission has plenty of work that it could do. My concern with sort of moving in this direction right now is threefold. So one, I just think generally, I think if we join with, if we eliminate our ordinance, we eliminate our commission and for the prospect of joining and creating a new structure, we don't know how that structure is going to be created. We don't know and potentially could dilute Palmdale's voice that is specific to Palmdale concerns. If the structure was already established, then we would have clarity as to how many members would be there, who's appointing who, how many voices we have, how many voices Lancaster has. I, I'm now hearing from my colleague that potentially the county is going to be involved in this, although our documents do not reflect that the county commission is, is going to be participant in this new joint structure. But I've also got concerns with eliminating the commission without a plan. Like, is there an urgency that we need to eliminate the commission now without a seamless transition into a structure that's already existent? I mean, we don't even know, we don't have a timeline, we don't have any, you know, general idea of what it's going to look like. We're just going to eliminate ours for some, you know, prospect of a, of a joint commission at some, you know, unknown date in the future. I think that's, that kind of defies logic. It is far more, at least from, in my opinion, it's more logical for us to maintain our commission, continue doing the work, and simultaneously working with Lancaster and potentially the county, whoever wants to partner in this, this larger entity, to develop and create that. And when it's ready and, and established, then we have a seamless transition. So there's no lapse in the discussion and the dialogue that relates to our human rights concerns that are really prevalent and affect people's daily lives here in our city. And then thirdly, from what I understand, this matter came before the board and is be, or before the council and is now, an ordinance has been drafted, and we didn't even reach out to our human rights commissioners to ask their input. I, I know, Madam Chair, you're here now, but in advance of this, we didn't even ask. These are the people that we personally appointed to the commission, and I was advised that we did not ask our, our commissioners, you know, what items they would like to discuss, what, what do they think about, you know, merging? Did they have a, a meeting where they discussed the potential of merging and moving in that direction? No. So I just think procedurally, it's, this is slightly flawed. We're just going to terminate our commission here with no idea when or how it's going to. We're going to establish some joint structure in the future. And, and all the while, in the, in the interim, we're having no dialogue on, or discourse on really, really critical human rights issues in our community.
All right. City Manager, do you have any more information about, I know we're further along the process than that, if you want to speak to how it is we're going to do this and the date and the timeline and?
So administratively, the city manager of Lancaster and I plan to sit down and spend time deciding what that looks like. We have not invested a ton of time in doing it, subject to council's decision as to whether or not you want to go this route. Putting in the effort to create the new one when we don't even know if this is going to be approved by the council would be premature.
Okay. Well, I think it's important that we work towards working together. The theme tonight that I got from almost every issue we had is working together and trying to collaborate with one another to solve some of the issues. We see that participation's not necessarily what it should be when it comes to local government and, and whatever it takes to help get us there to the place we need to be, I'm all for that. I do believe having more people in the room to discuss the issues that are at hand, and there certainly seems to be a lot of issues in the community these days. I'm all for trying to get more people to the table. And that's one reason I, I support trying to, to collaborate and bring more people from across the, from across the aisle. If this, if the council wishes to do that, great. If we're not quite there yet, no problem. But, you know, ultimately, I think the, the, the goal is, is that we're working together. We're, we're coming, we're coming together to try to figure out how to solve some of these social issues, the financial issues, and so on, and so on. You know, the animal issues, we're trying to figure out how, how to work together. I think that's a good step forward to this, but I'm willing to hear from my colleagues and see how they feel about this. I know it's very sensitive.
I would just like to add a little to that, and that is, I thought I saw the funding for this. I thought I saw an insert about the amount of money that, that is budgeted through 2029?
No anticipated fiscal impact change.
I'm sorry.
There's no anticipated fiscal impact change. We would take that through the budget process.
Right. Okay. But I mean, there's, there's some resources that are being applied to, to this, and we would be joining with Lancaster.
That's to be determined through the budget process and through the creation of the new entity.
So if we, we take this action tonight, and then for some reason Lancaster doesn't, or we can't, I mean, I imagine that the two cities, the two city manager staff are going to work together to create the new organism. But let's say that it all falls apart, we can always come back and recreate our own, right? But in the effort to, to address these issues as a community, as a region, this, I agree with the mayor, it's a, it's a step in the right direction. And I believe that staff has already made some efforts to work with Lancaster to try to get this done so that, you know, we serve a greater need.
What's before you tonight was a group effort already. Now the next step is creation of the next organization or the next commission.
Thank you.
So I just need clarity. I mean, so Mayor Protimloa, you said that you understand that there's already discussion about some sort of fiscal appropriation towards this. There is no indication of that in any of these documents. Mr. Mayor, you said city manager is aware of a timeline and, and all of these things are already in the works. None of that is in this report. Councilmember Olson, you talked about the county being part of this. That is also not in the report. I don't know who's having what conversations with whom, but this seems to be a far more thought-through process than is being presented publicly tonight.
To address my comment, it does say a valley-wide approach, and I consider the county to be a partner in a valley-wide approach. So if I made an assumption, pardon me.
And we are having discussions with the county about being part of this, but like I said earlier, it starts with Lancaster and Palmdale coming together first, and then we bring in the other entities to make sure that we're all represented.
And my understanding is that staff has been working with the staff in Lancaster, and you're indicating as well that there's communications with the county. I, I haven't talked to anyone in Lancaster about this, but my understanding is staff is taking care of it, which is the way we usually operate, through our city managers. And if I might, you're, you're absolutely correct there. A, as far as the, the funding issue, there, I don't think there really is one at all. There is currently budgeted staff support. Your, your deputy city manager, Nardi Lopez, is the organizer, manager, staff overseer with support for the, the H-RAC. Those monies are still there to the extent that would then shift to either Nardi, Rhonda, whomever now interacting with their city manager and ACMs to structure this. That's why there isn't a lot of detail in. Administratively, they will be making something that works for the two cities certainly, and then for county and whoever else gets brought into it. Because we have this duality of cities, trying to have two city councils manage a to-be-created organizations, really quite awkward. You've got two very professional city managers with two very professional staffs who know the goal of being socially wise and responsive. Sometimes you just got to trust the process.
Yep. So speaking to the process, I know all the time it, it might not be perfect, but the intention is, is pure and true that we want, we want people to be working together. We want the inclusive, inclusivity. We want the collaboration. And to your other point, would, would we be able with this to bring in people from other boards like school boards or, or representatives from schools? Because I'd like to have a nice big roundtable at the end of the day where everyone can sit down and discuss the issues.
Again, you've got the, the two executives from each agency who'll be working on it. Certainly, I think they would respect any thoughts, input, comments that you might individually make, so let them know who you, you might think be good. The, the whole purpose of this is not to exclude narrow, but to create a, a nimble, if you will, a responsive body that will carry out what's best for the communities. It's, it isn't some big conspiracy, it isn't some big, oh my, we're different than them. It's pretty simple.
Yeah, but it makes a lot of sense to me that staff needs this direction to go work on a bigger picture, because why put in that time and effort if this is not going to be our intent? If on the other side of it, it isn't what we want, we bring it back, which is preferable to me, because I think at the formation of this committee, it was rushed because the mayor at the time was getting negative feedback from the Human Rights Campaign, and he wanted to up his score. So he rushed together a committee because he thought it was going to suffice them, but there was no clear direction, it wasn't thought out. So if we have to bring this back and redefine it later, because whatever we're voting on now doesn't work back, so be it. It's better than what we have now.
And just to that point, there's no necessity, we don't have to repeal the full ordinance in order to give direction to the city manager to move forward, give her the authority to move forward in establishing the commission, which means that we could do both simultaneously. You don't have to repeal the whole ordinance and then potentially down the road, if something goes awry, we then have to enact another ordinance, and then there's waiting periods and whatnot. We don't have to repeal the ordinance. All we really need to do is, as a city council, issue direction to the city manager, give her the authority to engage in, in negotiations with whatever entities, whether it's the school board, the county, whoever it is, and then come back to us. And when that's ready to be adopted, then we can repeal the ordinance and then we can move forward. But there's no need for us to repeal the ordinance right now.
I move to approve 7.1.
One second, Ed.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Going to call the question?
Start voting. Motion passes.
All right. Moving on, I have number eight. City manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We do not have a second meeting here in October, as many of the council members will be attending the League of California Cities Conference in Long Beach, which is a gathering of the entire state's cities, where we talk about advocacy and legislative action and trends throughout the cities, excuse me, throughout the cities. So I do have quite a list of things that will be happening between now and our next meeting, if you would indulge me. We have opening day of our food truck events happening this Friday. We have several food trucks that will be circling up on a regular basis at the former Hammock Center, and you can visit them every night from four to 10 p.m. Actually, I think it's four to 9:30, excuse me. And we have, in partnership with Lancaster, Tour de Luke Charity Ride, as well as with our local businesses, Making Strides Breast Cancer Walk on October 5th, our District Four Neighborhood Watch on October 8th, Kaleidoscope on the 11th and 12th, and that's where we have our wonderful drone show and feature a lot of art. This year, we will also be expanding and having a little more fall harvest theme engagement with some vendors, and it should be well-attended by all. We have Fall Family Movie Night, check our website to get the specifics, Trick or Treat Trail at Dominic Misari on the 18th, Mental Health Awareness Day, the You Are Enough Walk at Ponticlon Square on the 19th, Palmdale School District Wellness Fair, also on the 19th at Palmdale Academy Charter School, Palmdale Sheriff's Halloween Station opened, that's a mouthful, Palmdale Sheriff's Station Halloween themed open house on the 19th. There's a lot going on on the 19th. Please don't say there's nothing to do in the valley. And Palmdale Sheriff Booster Trunker Treat on the 27th. In news and announcements, we were very excited to win the first place award for our Great Food Rescue Documentary that was produced here in-house with our team. This honor recognized our city's commitment to the edible food recovery and our partnerships with local organizations and local community groups to support food insecure residents in the South Antelope Valley. So that was a very big award for us to receive. We're very excited, and I thank staff for all of their efforts on it. And this year, for the first time, we are going to be featuring Palmdale's Pumpkin Palooza at the Auto Mall. Very excited to have a pumpkin patch in our Auto Mall from October 1st to 31st. Weekdays, it's from 2:00 to 8:00 p.m., and weekends, it's from 10:00 to 8:00 p.m. So go get your pumpkins right there, and maybe you get a car too. Something. Thank you.
Sheriff's report.
Good evening, Mayor Bishop and Council. Response times in the month of September ticked up due to the response to the bridge fire. The average was 146 minutes for routine calls. We handled 4,754 calls for service in September. We continued our partnerships with the public, city's public safety staff with CSOs handling 158 incidents in the month of August and writing 145 reports. We appreciate this partnership, which is the model of efficiency utilizing city resources to mutually address public safety concerns. Based on preliminary data, we are averaging 276 Part I crimes per month. Part I crimes including murders, rapes, assaults, robberies, burglary, thefts, and arson. Through the month of September, crimes against persons are currently down 8.4% for the year compared to last year. Property crimes are remaining level with a slight decrease of 2.5% for the year compared to last year. 295 arrests were made in the month of September and 14 firearms were recovered. Graffiti continues to be a prominent issue for us. During the month of September, the city-funded graffiti detective noted 13 arrests for graffiti and conducted an additional 11 investigations into incidences of graffiti. Traffic enforcement and collision prevention are also critical to our success in protecting the public. We had 165 collisions in September, which is an increase of 5% compared to last year. Our fatal traffic collisions are showing a 15% decrease year-to-date. We also had 34% increase in traffic citations during the same period with 973 compared to 724 last year. This is largely attributable to the city, to the seven city-funded traffic enforcement deputies. I'd like to personally thank the City of Palmdale for helping us to honor Deputy Ryan Klinkbrumer with the 24-hour vigil during the one-year anniversary of his tragic death on September 16th. The city's Public Safety Department recently has partnered with us on the city-funded Gunback Event at Ponticlon Square. Eighty-five firearms were surrendered, bringing the total to 128 across the two events we conducted together. And as was earlier mentioned, Palmdale Station will be hosting a Honda Gail themed open house on October 19th between 10 a.m. and 3 p.m. Thank you.
All right.
Just one, one question. I think I saw a note somewhere that your average confiscation of firearms due to criminal activity runs about 25 per month, and so this actually represents over three months' production of firearms being recovered.
Oh, you're speaking regarding to the buyback?
Through the buyback program, yes.
Yes, that would, well, you're asking me to do fast math right now, so.
Yeah.
But that sounds about right.
Yeah, I, I think I saw an email, I think from Captain Barton, that indicated that on average, it's about 25 firearms that are recovered.
Yeah.
Due to whatever criminal investigation or, or detention is, comes about. So that's 25, so this, this actually represents over three months' worth of that kind of thing.
That sounds correct, sir.
Yeah. All right.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Moving on.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. I have number 10. Council reports announcements and requests for future agenda items. Who wants to go first?
I have one.
Okay.
Go from left to right?
It was, we've got various events on my report, but one of particular note, it was indeed an honor to represent the City of Palmdale at the memorial service for our fallen firefighter, Dustin Roberto. Station 93 has gone through a lot, lost two firefighters in the past few months, had injured, injured members of their family. They are struggling still. It, it truly was painful to watch the family go through. He, he was recently married, his wife is pregnant, and he's, I think, I think he's in his, I think he was 30, in his 30s, he's young, 34, 34. Young, vibrant, full of life, young man, and his youngest of, of the children to his parents. So I presented on behalf of the City of Palmdale a certificate recognizing his life of service and recognizing that we adjourned in his memory. and recognizing that we adjourned in his memory. That's it. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, I'll go. As Mayor Pro Tim Loa mentioned earlier in the meeting, we have some funding disparities with the county. Go to the Palmdale website, and you can read what Measure PD may or may not do for the city. Another thing I want to thank, Assembly Member Juan Corillo. He submitted legislation that allows Caltrans to relinquish Palmdale Boulevard to the city of Palmdale. That has been signed by the governor.
Hey. A long time coming.
This legislation allows Caltrans to surrender. It doesn't mandate. We are still in negotiation with Caltrans. For example, they've committed 20-plus million dollars to some ADA improvements. We want to make sure that they follow through with that. We don't want to take on the whole liability. So this is just a huge monumental step that gives us the ability to get what we need. So thank you, Assembly Member Corillo.
Yes, good job, sir.
Mayor Pro Tim?
I go next, okay. Well, there's a number of things. I pointed out earlier, the Spanish Talk Radio, we do that on a monthly basis. EAFD, Grace Fest at Palmdale Amphitheater. Danny Bazell, who was an outstanding member of the community, particularly involved with Plant 42 and Edwards Air Force Base, was, you know, a leader in Civ Mill, the civilian military coalition that is one of the best civ mill organizations in the United States. He was always a leader in that, promoter of that, a champion of that. And then unfortunately, took his own life. And that was tragic. And it shines a light on the issue that we've been talking about here at the city council, the gravity of mental illness, sometimes completely hidden. You wouldn't expect that. You definitely would not expect that of this man. And so it affected a great number of people in this valley. And his memorial was very well-attended. I believe there was another memorial on Monday at Edwards Air Force Base in his memory. And it's well-deserved. And I would request that we close the evening in memory of Danny Bazell. Palmdale Playhouse 30th Anniversary was a terrific event. It's well-attended. And I think we gave great honor to the Playhouse that's been serving this community for 30 years. Then we also had the tragedy of Deputy Klinkbrumer on the 16th of September last year. And there was a vigil. And the mayor and I both attended that and stood with the deputies as they stood in attention for quite a while in the heat, in memory of that valiant deputy who died right outside the station. We met with the Palmdale School District on an issue of great importance to our epic program. I think we made a lot of progress there. I was also attended by the superintendent, Raul Maldonado, and a couple of their directors. And I think we opened up a discussion area that will be significant, not only in epic, but I think in other areas that affect both the city and our school district. There was a meeting with the auto dealers, several other things. And I attend the Executive Committee for Regional Homeless Alignment in downtown L.A. My report indicates that I attended the 9/11 Remembrance Ceremony at the mall. I did not because that day I was not well, having caught the bug again. And it was particularly, I was very disappointed that I couldn't go, but I'm all right now. I was very disappointed that I couldn't make it that day because I was included in the 9/11 Committee. And that would have been my first remembrance attendance. And there I couldn't go. So I hope I can make it next year. So this will be submitted with those corrections. Thank you.
Okay. Glad you're feeling better.
Thank you.
So some of the highlights that I had over the month. Well, first of all, I took a week's off vacation, so that was enjoyable. I met with a group that is trying to bring a new, like tele-medical for mental health so that people in the Antelope Valley can reach out by phone as opposed to going into an office. Some people are embarrassed going into offices. They don't have transportation, any number of reasons. They're setting up a program where you can either go in their office or you can do it by phone. So I met with them, and we're going to try and keep moving that forward. I was at the 9/11 ceremony, a somber event. I attended the AV Chamber Luncheon with Tom Lackey and Juan Corillo were there, and that was very informative. They talked about all the things that they've had passed in the last year, and they've got a lot done, folks. You may not have heard about it, but they get things done. So that was very impressive, all the things that they've done. AV Edge Luncheon, that was interesting because they were also talking about the new website that they're launching for AV Edge for people that are anticipating or have the thought that they might want to come to the Antelope Valley and bring a business. And this will allow them a website where they can find demographic information, resources, available buildings for putting their businesses in. It's going to be a very robust website, and I'm waiting to see that come online and be well-utilized. I went to the fair when I got back from vacation, and it was wonderful. It was a relatively cool evening, and there was no wind, so it was nice. And then we went ahead and did our AB 1, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 1, 6, 6, 1 training, which is required by, I guess, the state. That's a state rule. So we went ahead as a council, and we had our sexual harassment training and our ethics training. And we spent a whole day being trained, trained, trained about, you know, what we can do, what we can't do, what the public can do, what the public can't do. So we had a lot of really good information. They update and change the laws every once in a while. So it's good that we keep abreast of what's happening and what the changes are. And I know there's a few other things that I did, but I can't remember what they are, so I apologize. I'll submit what I have, but it was a busy month, and I forgot some of the things that I went to, so I'm sorry.
I want to add one thing.
Yeah, sure.
So, yes, thank you. I was at the fair this week, and this is the first year that it's moved to September instead of at the beginning of September, end of August. It was really well-attended, especially on Saturday and Sunday. And it was great to see the turnout by the community, so that was good.
Yeah. Saturday was very well-attended.
Yeah.
All right, so I went to a lot of similar, a lot of the same events. Couple of things that stuck out, the Kiwanis Duck Race was great. Councilmember Olson was there. Nobody won the million dollars. Sorry to say, but great turnout. They raised a lot of money for a lot of good causes. That's something that I really look forward to every year at Dry Town. It's really a great event. We had 9/11, Chamber Lunch, very informational. Palmdale Playhouse 30th Anniversary. That, our Palmdale Playhouse is really, really a beautiful facility. And it's aging better than I am. So that was my joke at the event. It's a recycled joke, yeah. But all seriousness, staff does a great job taking care of it. We celebrated our 30-year anniversary, and I believe the place looks as good as the day it opened. And it's a great place for people to be creative and do theater and have presentations. And it's, when you heard people talk about it during the event, you can tell it's an anchor in the community. It really is a resource that our theater groups and our creative, our creative people in our community go there. The theater, the actors, it's more than that. It's the actors, it's the set dressers, the costumes. So I'm so glad we continue to have that in our community, and the staff does such a good job keeping the place up. Let's see what else. Oh, lots of events. Auto Mall Dine and Drive, our Econ Dev Department put that on. That was very well-attended, and the food vendors loved that. Speaking of food vendors, we're going to have seven days a week over at, over, was it Sixth Avenue Hill? Where the Hammock Center was. We're going to do food trucks there. Veterans Car Show, Taco Festival. Neighborhood Watch District 1 Meeting was last week. And that was, we had a great turnout for that. The neighborhood came out. We got to talk to a lot of different neighbors. Parks Department's doing a great job this year with all of our events. Thank you, Parks Department. Yeah, lots of stuff going on. No shortage of events to do in the later part of the year.
Can I just give one shout-out to a group I think that needs to be recognized? When I was at the 9/11 event, the Palmdale Choir came and sang. They were amazing. And most of it was acapella. They did such an amazing job. These kids put their heart and soul into their practice and their songs and their outfits. And I just wanted to give a big shout-out to all of them for coming to the event and performing so well. It was a very stressful event, and there were a lot of people there, and it was hot. So I just wanted to thank them for coming and give them a shout-out, so. Thank you.
Yeah, they're fantastic singers. The harmony is incredible, all right. All right, so that's going to move us to item number 11, non-agenda public comments. So now's the time for public participation.
We have Eugene Hernandez.
I want to give my congratulations to Eric and Austin for helping to crush the Chicano community's voice and the Human Relations Committee. Attaboy, great job. I'm going to write to Corillo about how could you be a representative, Eric, if you're so hostile to Chicano voices? You know, I'm going to ask him to fire you, you know? At the last meeting.
I beat you to it.
You're going to get fired? Good. At the last meeting, I talked to the ABTA Representative, Martin Topskin, about why we cannot have bus benches for our community. And he said, oh, because of seismic reasons, you know? Totally P-esque thing. But I'd like to ask Richard, because you're on the board of ABTA. You get a nice stipend for being on that board. Why have you not, in all the years that you've been there, not fought for bus benches? You know, imagine if your tia or abuelita was standing outside in 107 or 114-degree heat, and there's no place to sit down. Is that humane? Couldn't you ask, I've been to that board? And Tom Lackey attacked me because I asked for bus benches or bus shelter. You know, the city of Palmdale gives ABTA money. You should withhold the money till every single bus stop has benches and bus shelters. The way you treat people, you should treat people the way you treat your little Guzano friend Camacho from the auto, you treat them like a king. Why not treat the abuelitas, the tias, who are coming in with bags of groceries, and they have no place to sit down waiting for the bus? You know, what would, the city should just supply the bus benches itself. But you won't because you don't have a conscience.
Your comments are not worth responding to.
Dave Owens.
Well, since Mayor Pro Tim said that, and while we're waiting, I did, we had an ABTA presentation, I want to say, two or three meetings ago. I asked in public forum for an inventory of the bus benches and bus shelters during that meeting, specifically because I was concerned about those issues. I also specifically asked for a report back from the city manager. So I guess to go back to future items on the agenda, can we please put that on the agenda?
All right. I think you've been waiting patiently for a couple of weeks now.
I have, I have. Yeah, I may ask a little point of privilege on the time because I do have a little bit to give away. My name is Dave Owens, and I'm here today representing the admin of the Antelope Valley Restaurant Support Group. To give you a little bit of context, this group started at the beginning of COVID. It wasn't my idea, which I'm not really happy about. I wish it was such a good idea, which it was mine. But anyway, I was asked to be the admin, and it has really caught the fancy of the Antelope Valley. It is over 22,000 extremely engaged members. And the different restaurant owners in the Antelope Valley have all told me that the page has been a tremendous benefit to them. There are a lot of restaurants that have been really highlighted and become great favorites that people did not know, like Lee Esters existed. And if you don't know that Lee Esters exists, then I feel very sorry for you because they have some of the best Cajun food ever. And I've been to Louisiana, and I told Michael Brinknack that I've had food as good as Lee Esters, but I've never had any better. And so it has really been something that's kind of, that's just been amazing. We've been able to partner on the restaurant page with, we promoted the dine and drive. We were able to get, you know, we gave some food vouchers away. And so we really had a lot of tremendous, you know, good feedback on that. And so because it is really the hippest Facebook group that you could be a part of, I did have hoodies made for each one of you. And I know Mayor Bishop, I know that you're in the group. And I know, yeah, so may I approach?
Yes, of course.
Okay, thank you. I'll give each one to you. So anyway, it says, you know, Austin Bishop, City of Palmdale.
All right.
So that's all yours right there.
Thank you so much.
And then I also have one for, okay. Now, just so you know the terminology, an OG food fool is somebody that's been around from practically the beginning. And Eric Olson is an OG food fool, very, you know. And, you know, and actually, I had a great conversation with Caltrans Alarcon at the, at an AV edge of it. She hadn't heard about it. We had a great discussion. She joined on the spot. So anyway, there you go. There's yours. And I guarantee you, if you walk into our local restaurants, you will, they will, they will know what that is. Councilmember Better Court, I did check the group just now. I did not see your name on their group. But I will give you this, assuming that you will join the group, okay?
I got one of your originals.
Oh, do you really?
Back in the day, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, thank you so much.
And then also, Mayor Pro Tim, well, I got one for you as well.
All right.
Hoodie season is coming up. Wear it with pride. And also, I do have one, kind of a special one made, that is for Ronald Perez, Boss Ladies. There you go. Thank you so much. You're quite welcome. And just one more real quick thing I want to add. As you know, I'm also chairman of the board at the AV Cemetery District. On October 18th, we're going to be having what's called History After Dark. We are going to have a tour of the cemetery after dark. Maybe October is a great time for that. And I'll just finish up. You're all invited. There will be a taco feast afterwards, courtesy of Infernal Tacos, with a great time to, you know, feast on it. You're all welcome to do it. It's a support of Friends of the Lancaster Cemetery. Wear those with pride. Thank you.
So before you go, Dave, I know we're not supposed to engage, but I just want to say thank you for the hoodie. I don't have social, I don't have social media. So I'm one of the old timers.
I just hear excuses, is all I hear. I'm sorry.
But I am a real big fan of cemeteries.
Okay.
I'm part of Find a Grave.
Okay.
So I partner and do things for them. But as far as your after-hours thing, my family's been going to Sinking Springs Cemetery in Virginia for decades. And they do the after-dark thing where everybody dresses up in costume.
Cosplay is totally fine.
And they portray people who are historic people buried at the cemetery. It's a lot of fun.
Well, I'm not going to give any spoilers, but let's just say it's going to be a lot of fun.
So you probably will see me out there.
Okay, I hope so. So thank you so much.[1700.00] So thank you so much. Appreciate your time, and see you on the food page. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave, for supporting our small business and restaurant community.
Absolutely.
Vicky Ventura.
Hi, good evening again, Mayor Austin Bishop and council members. My name is Victoria Ventura, and I am the district director.
So I'm the new district director, by the way.
Eric Olson's no longer. He resigned a few months ago. So anyways, I'm the new district director for Assemblymember Juan Correa, who represents the Assembly District 39. On behalf of the Assemblymember Juan Correa, I am here to share with you that the Assemblymember is incredibly thrilled to announce that Governor Gavin Newsom has officially signed 10 of his proposed bills into law. So yes, Laura, he is up there working hard, you know, just being up there, long hours. I am such, so honored to be working for him as his district director because I've seen the challenges and all the hours that he's been putting up. So I'm so, so honored to be working with him. So two out of the 10 bills that were signed by Governor Gavin Newsom are AB 2082, which it's a relinquishment of Palmdale Boulevard, like Councilmember Eric Olson mentioned early, and I thank you for that acknowledgement to him. He worked, the whole team and Assemblymember worked really hard, long hours, to get that done. So it is done. So now it's back to the city of Palmdale, so now you guys can go on, move forward, and do what you have to do. So we're very excited about that. The other one is AB 2443, which is a Transactions and Use Tax Bill. This bill authorizes the cities of Lancaster, Palmdale, and Victorville to impose a transactions and use tax for the purpose of countywide transportation programs and general services at a rate of no more than 1%, including a requirement, oh, that is combined, I'm sorry. Ooh, lost my place. Hold on one second, sorry. Including a requirement that the combined rate of all taxes that may be imposed in accordance with the law in the jurisdiction not to exceed 2%, the voters of each city would have to approve this increase before it becomes in effect. So this bill will allow us to keep those tax dollars in our cities before they get diverted to LA County. So they'll stay here in our cities. So we're very excited about that. The Assemblymember emphasizes the importance of collaboration and community advocacy and driving meaningful change. Many of the bills presented in this session's legislative package were requested or directly inspired by constituents, and community feedback played a crucial role in the amendment process. These laws are a testament of, to what we can accomplish when we work together. The Assemblymember is committed to continuing this momentum and ensuring that our community's voice is heard in Sacramento. As the Assemblymember prepares for the next legislative session, he remains dedicated to championing policies that promote local jobs, affordable housing, so Sofia will be more than happy to collaborate with you if you're still here, and accessible education opportunities, and looks forward to continuing to build off the success of his first term in the California Assembly. So thank you for your time, and we'll look forward to working with all of you.
I want to make a comment.
Yes, sir.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
I was on the council from 2001 to 2, well, just about 2005. We started discussing the acquisition of Palmdale Boulevard then, and of course, we met with a lot of opposition. So I believe that the triumph of Assemblyman Correa and getting this signed by the governor is the fruit of an effort that's been going on for many, many years for us to control this boulevard. And when Mr. Correa was on this council, he and I both advocated together that this should happen, and I'm just very happy and thrilled that we're going to get to a point where we can actually take control of this boulevard and enhance it so we can really make Palmdale proud.
Absolutely. Yeah, so congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you for the hard work that he does, and we love that he has not forgotten where he's come from because he's sat on this council for many years.
Yes.
And on some school boards, and he worked for the city at one point. This is his home, and I appreciate the fact that he has not forgot about us, even though he's gone up to Sacramento. And I believe that he has helped us tremendously up in Sacramento, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, and he will continue to do that. We may not agree with everything he does, but I could guarantee you that his heart, he does it with, you know, with all his constituents in mind and what's best for the city and the community. So thank you for all your support. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Marcos Alvarez.
As one who was part of the Human Rights Advisory Committee, I'm reaching out to say thanks. Thanks for allowing me to express my voice to a limited, if you will. Why do I say that? Because somebody said here earlier about 5:15 that that committee has done nothing. Well, they have done nothing because meetings were canceled intentionally time and time again, thus limiting our opportunity to do anything. So now it's been done. It's been voted on, 4 to 1 today, right? You've silenced an entire community as it relates to the issues going on here. Because when I knew this was being brought up, I thought, wow, what are they doing here, right? You guys have mentioned there's a bigger mission as it relates to regional. You may be right, but I'll oppose you with this. If I go buy a house and I've never seen that house, if I go buy a car, a used car, and I haven't even seen that car, and I invest in it as lawyers, as business owners, is that a good way to move forward as we want to relate with regional, with Lancaster? Probably not. And finally, I just want to say that nobody approached us. I'll say that again. Nobody approached us, right? And, you know, I want to be positive and thankful on all of this, but it would have been beneficial to at least say, hey, what do you think? This is our plan moving forward, right? This is what we want to do because the problems that are happening here are also happening in Lancaster. So what do you think? That never took place. And finally, I just want to say thank you for the training that took place just a few days ago, because ethically, what I just said would have played a role in the decision you're about to make. Thank you.
Chair and Council, we have no more speaker cards.
Okay, I think we got one more.
Many times over the years, I've come to you in October. I want to emphasize today that we cannot become complacent when it comes to cancer. Now, I am a breast cancer survivor 20 years ago, three weeks ago. So I know how important it is. We are very fortunate nowadays for the medicine we have, the research we have, the scans we have, all these tools that aid us in detecting cancer. Also, our hands that we can use to detect cancer, but we're very fortunate. But we can't take that for granted. We can't forego tests or scans or doctor's visits thinking, well, if I get it, you know, they'll be able to cure it for me. They'll be able to fix me up. They'll take care of the problem. Well, like I said, three weeks ago, I was celebrating, of course, at Disneyland, my 20 years of being cancer-free. Two weeks later, thank you, very fortunate, two weeks later, I was putting flowers on my nephew's grave in our cemetery here in Palmdale. He was one month over his 45th birthday when he died of cancer of the brain. He was the joy of our family. My first nephew made me a net. All the medicine in the world, all the scans in the world, all the surgery in the world could not save him. We cannot become complacent and think just because we are fortunate right now in what we have, it is only as good as we engage with it. Thank you.
Okay, so you know I'm going to jump in here and say something, right? I'm going to be with you on the walk if you're going to the walk.
Yes, I am going to be on the walk.
So I'll be there. I don't know how far I can walk.
I know. Do I can bring a walker?
I'll bring my walker, too.
Okay, okay. Yes, I will be with you on Saturday.
Even with all the testing, even with all the advances we have, they still make mistakes. Always get a second opinion. You know, I was given nine months to live three years ago. There is no surgery for what I have because my cancer has metastasized to all of my bones, from my skull to my feet. That's why I walk funny. I have a lot of pain, and it's eaten a big chunk of my spine. They, I have a lot of medicine. Like you said, medicine is great. Keeps you alive a little bit longer, but I never missed a mammogram. I never missed a test. They missed it, and thank God we have medication now that can prolong my life. I'm walking on borrowed time, and I know it, but I'm happy to be here. I truly am, and I'm blessed for the friends that put up with me when I can't walk, when I've had four strokes because of my treatment. So sometimes I forget things. Sometimes I misspeak. Sometimes I struggle for words. Cancer is no joke. It is not for the faint of heart because you spend your life going from doctor to doctor to doctor to pharmacy to pharmacy to treatment to treatment, and you try to live a normal life along the way. Not just breast cancer, but every kind of cancer. We are having an epidemic in this country right now, and they don't know why. More and more young people under the age of 40 are showing up with cancer, maybe better detection, I don't know, but please get checked. I have a gene mutation called a check-two gene mutation, which they think may have contributed to my cancer. They don't know. But I urge all of you, yes, it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Men, women can both get breast cancer. I just don't know how to implore all of you to get checked and then get double-checked because, like I said, I never missed a mammogram. They missed it.
If we mention the word cancer this month, it's going to save somebody. It doesn't matter if we mention it in the realm of breast cancer, as long as we bring that word out of the closet and put it right up front for what it is, we're going to save somebody.
I hope so. I hope so. And thank you all for being patient with me while I throw that out there, so thank you.
All right, do we have any more speakers? Okay, so that's going to take us to adjournment. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. We had a lot of good participation. I want to thank the staff. I want to thank everyone in the audience that's here with us to the end, everyone that came out to speak. It's an absolute privilege to be here on this council. I want to thank the public for giving me this chance, too. We've got some issues to work on, but we're working our way through them. But it's great we can come together and address some of these issues head-on and try to make our city a better place to live. With that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting in memory of Dustin Roberto and Danny Bizzell. The next meeting's going to be held November 6, 2024, 5:00 p.m. in this council chamber. Thank you, everyone. Get home safe.
Happy election.
I guess so, huh?
Wow.
There you go. We'll see you then.
So Laura, I'll see you on Saturday.
You will. I'll have...